Okay, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the July 2nd, 2019 Meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
And thank you, Ms. Riska. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Taylor, Mrs. Sarowski.
Present.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Arco.
Present.
Okay, and thank you, everyone. May I have the approval of the agenda for tonight?
Madam Mayor Protam.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do I have... So, the motion's been made to approve, and do I have support?
Support.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, any nays? Thank you very much. And it's been moved and supported and voted through. Okay, so Agenda number five, could we please have report from the City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protam Sarowski. As everyone knows, Sterling Fest is just around the corner, and it will be held on Thursday, July 25th, and Friday, the 28th and the 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. each day. As you know, we have the traditional arts and crafts show. They will be back once again this year, similar setup to last year. The big new component of Sterling Fest this year is a fireworks display that will be on Thursday, sponsored by Christian Financial Credit Union, beginning after the main stage musical acts Thursday evening. So, somewhere around 9:30 to 10 o'clock, the firework display will start. So, we're really looking forward to that new edition of Sterling Fest. And on the main stage Thursday will be the Mega 80s. Some of you may have heard them at Music in the Park. They're phenomenal. They draw a huge crowd. And on Friday will be Sugar Ray. They will be the headliner. And Saturday will be Vince Neil of Motley Crue. So, look forward to all those great musical acts and other entertainment at Sterling Fest again later this month. And at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the City Council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the City Attorney regarding legal strategy in connection with the city's pending litigation Macomb County Circuit Court Case Number 2017-00052-AS. And Mayor Protam Sarowski, at the last City Council meeting, the Council directed administration to hold an informational meeting regarding the Plum Brook Nature Trail, and I'd like to take just a few minutes to provide a summary of that meeting. It was held a week ago today at Velocity from 6:30 until about 8:30. We had 50 or so residents that showed up. We had numerous conversations, some one-on-one conversations, that were then followed up with numerous site visits over the past week, in addition to follow-up meetings also. So, let me just take a couple of minutes and go through this summary if I can draw your attention to the screen. First, we spent some time at the meeting talking about crime. There's some concern from residents, and we certainly understand, knowing this is a new feature, that crime might increase wherever there's a park amenity, a large open space, or a trail in this case. And our police chief at the meeting spent some time talking about the 31 parks and green spaces in Sterling Heights, and explaining that the crime rates in those areas, any of our parks, are no higher, lower than any other area of this city. And as everyone knows, we have an incredibly safe city, and that includes all of our parks and our trail systems. You may recall, last year, Channel 7 highlighted Sterling Heights as being the sixth safest large city in the country. So, the chief spent some time talking about what they do to patrol parks and so on, and also looked at numerous surveys from around the country, from credible sources, and in no case was there any trending crime rates higher in or around parks and trail systems than there were in any of the communities that were surveyed across the country, that is. And then the police chief also explained that we do have a bike patrol. We have 20-plus police officers that are certified and participate in our bike patrol, and they are out in Dodge Park all the time, and periodically on our other trail systems throughout the city, and certainly would be on this trail as needed, or through some of their random safety patrols. In addition to the bike patrol, we have a number of new, I guess you could call these cabotas or four-wheeler quads. One that is specifically dedicated to police to patrol all of our parks. This can be deployed to any trail system or any park very readily. It has all the state-of-the-art police equipment on it, radios and the like. In addition to this quad, we have about 10 other quads throughout the organization that can be deployed to various areas of our park system and trailways if ever need be. Of course, we also have, in addition to our robust police department force, we also have Citizens on Patrol. This is a voluntary group that goes out and patrols various areas of our city, their eyes and ears for the police department. They have radios. They can call in any problems that they know, and that includes in parks and trail systems as well. And then we have dedicated officers to each quadrant of the city. So, in this particular case, we have an officer that you could call. You'd be given his... We can provide his cellphone number if there's any problems. He would take direct responsibility and command any sort of extra patrols that might be needed. But again, the police chief reinforced that our park systems are incredibly safe. We're just not seeing any concerning crime. Now, that's not to say minor things don't happen here and there. That's natural, but it certainly does not affect our safe city distinction or overall crime rates in the city. And we do have a vast network of pathways and trails and parks across the city. We have in total approximately 15 miles of various trailways across the city and parks. And this is an illustration before you of a trailway system that goes through a park, and you can see it meanders through... There's multiple sections of this particular trailway, but you can see, like the Plum Brook Nature Trail, this particular trail goes along houses and is a major amenity for this particular park, Nelson Park down at 15 Mile Road. We've had no reported increases in crime in this area, no complaints of walkers, or bikers, or joggers trespassing into private property. It simply doesn't happen. So, our nature-related goals, you know, we spent some time, and I'm going to talk about a little more later, about doing all that we can to increase screening for residents that, you know, may be closer to the trail than other residents might be. So, you know, that is a clear objective of ours. It has been with all of our trailways, and we're doing all that we can to make sure in this particular case that there's adequate screening. And we'll continue to meet with homeowners one-on-one, including when the landscaper's actually ready to be deployed, so we can go out and mark off actual screening and get additional input from residents. One of our key goals in all of our park system, and especially along our trails, is to minimize animal habitats and to make sure that there's no disturbances, and ensure that the wildlife population flourishes. And we see that through all of our park systems, especially Dodge Park, one of our most heavily-used parks. Deer are plentiful. You can see them out there regularly, and that's with a very extensive trail system going right through the middle of the park, not only a nature trail, but also a BMX bike trail that is parallel to it. And not to mention the Clinton River as well, that now includes a lot of kayaking and canoeing and so on. So, needless to say, there's a lot of activity there, and the wildlife is enjoying the natural environment just as much as all of us are. So, what are the experts saying about trails and open spaces that are but private property? We spent some time talking about this. We had the President of the Gross Point Realtor Association, which encompasses all of Macomb County, come and talk a little bit about property values from his perspective and his experience that are near open spaces, including trails. But this particular comments I'm going to make come right from a report that just came out from the National Association of Realtors. This is their 2019 publication, and in it, they have a number of articles that talk about... Well, one in particular, "The Undeniable and Enduring Value of Nature. Parks, Trails, and Open Spaces Often Bring Value to Development," and the data proves it. So, according to a 2015 study, 83% said they personally benefit from a park, and 92% said their community benefited from a local park, even if that particular person didn't use it. There's increased recognition of the need of parks, trails, and open spaces in development. In one area studied, buyers were willing to pay over a 22% premium to live within a fifth of a mile from a particular trail. In another Greenway Path project that will soon be 25 miles long, property values have increased 30%. And this is just a sampling. There are countless studies that are out there, not just from the National Realtor Association, but many other sources that validate these claims as well. So, let's get into the pathway and how it's going to run along the Plum Brook Drain. This red line does not depict the exact location, but instead just gives you some familiarity of where the path will go. So, it comes out of Delia Park, and you can see it's well behind private property. If I can just use my pointer here. So, if you look at these three homes here, the private property line is up in this area. And same thing up here, the private property line is right in this area. And you can see the trail will be well beyond private property, but what's most important to note here is there will be ample screening along this particular area. This is the most open part of the space, but there will be significant screening. So, continuing northward on the path beyond Flish Drive, and for those of you who maybe weren't there at the time, this was part of an old, well, not so old, but a previous nine-hole golf course, and there's some still remnants of the golf course out there. So, that's why there's sort of this vast open space. In the vast open space, will continue to remain there. It's important to keep in mind that this trail will be 10 feet wide, and will be as close to the drain as possible in this case, and then an abundance of screening. So, residents will still be able to enjoy, although it's city property, this vast open And then continuing northward toward 19 Mile Road, you can see now the trail goes through the middle of a heavily wooded area, kind of splits the middle, if you will, and there's been a little adjustment here, so it doesn't jog off toward the Sterling Hunt Club condos, and it's more now directly in the middle of the woods, completely screened from residents in this particular area running along the drain. Again, if you can imagine the, you know, that's, oh, probably, you know, a few hundred feet easily, this trail system is 10 feet wide. So, continuing north of 19 Mile Road, you can see that is still in a heavily wooded area. There's no disruption to residents whatsoever, and completely veiled. In fact, even with an overhead, once this trail is installed, you really wouldn't be able to see it from this elevation because it's only 10 feet wide. So, continuing north toward Pond View, still in a heavily wooded area, as the trail gets a little closer to Pond View, it does come close, still on city property, to approximately four homes in that area, but well off the private property line. Some of this is open space up... Let's see if I can get my pointer here. You can see some of this is open space, but in large part because trees and shrubbery and whatnot have been cleared over the years, even though it's city property, thus exposing the trail somewhat here. Now, the city in these cases nevertheless is agreeing to put in heavy screening for these homes that are affected right here. Now, you can see, as it continues north to Pond View, this is sort of a large open space right here. Again, this is all city-owned property. And let me see if I can get a little closer. So, yes, if you look at this open space right here, what the trail does now is it comes a little bit further to the left and then kind of straight up the middle here. So, the city's plan is to rather than encumber this open space that residents have come to enjoy, playing frisbee maybe, or catch, or letting kids or grandkids run around, we wouldn't want to encumber it with trees right here, but we would put screening along this side and this side. So, again, these homes on the end would not have to see walkers or runners, but there would still be open space here that residents could continue to enjoy. And then, so as we continue to move north, this is the last stretch, so you can see a vast majority of this path is in heavily wooded areas, but there are some homes along this last stretch, Burning Bush, where there's open space. And again, this is in large part because homeowners have, not necessarily current homeowners, could be current, could be previous, have trimmed back this city land area so that they can enjoy more open space, again, thus exposing the trail pathway. Otherwise, this would all be wooded here, and the heavy screening would already be in place. But again, nevertheless, the city is willing to put screening in these areas where the trail would be visible. And then it continues up north here, and then heads over toward... It actually hugs the line here a little closer, and heads over to the Beaumont parking lot. So, that's a rough description of the pathway. And so, you see, this is an example of one of the open space areas where this camera shot is. It's close to where the trail edge would be, the outer edge of the trail, still very much on city property. The private property lines are up in here. You can tell where the private property lines are, although not depicted in this picture, wherever the utility boxes are, electrical utility boxes. They're typically right in the easement area, right along the private property lines. So, this all back in here is city property. Nevertheless, this is the type of screening that the city would put in to veil this look right here. And this is just one example of a few cases where we would need to do this, another look at it. This is a little more detailed drawing, kind of the same area we just looked at. This is more of a landscape architect drawing, kind of just illustrating the heavy landscape screening that would go in along the pathway. Now, one particular homeowner here said, "Well, you know, I'd like to enjoy this open space here, and if, even though it's city property, we've come to enjoy that over the years, and if you put screening up as you proposed, we're not going to be able to enjoy that the way we have," and we understand that. So, we have been willing to pin this landscape screening back some. And so, those are the types of adjustments that we're continuing to make as we seek input from residents, which, by the way, is a natural process. This is what we do with the trailway systems that we put in previous areas of the city. We have this natural engagement with residents as the trail systems are being built out. One of the residents asked at our last City Council meeting, and we touched on this at the informational meeting last week, "Why would we want to end it at Troy Beaumont? Why a hospital?" And it's a very good question. The reason being is, first, Troy Beaumont has been a community partner in this. They want individuals to have access to their facility. They'd like to showcase their facility. They have an amazing pizza cafe and deli. This is unlike any hospital or healthcare food eatery you've ever been to. It's really good. It's homemade pizza. They have a stone oven-fired pizza griller. Everything is made naturally. It's a popular respite point. So, if hikers, bikers, walkers wanted a place for a quick respite, this is right off the trail. They can go in there. Troy Beaumont has said they have no problem with the use. In addition, there's restrooms there that can be used, along with a sort of a small convenience center where you can buy slushies and things of that sort. So, we thought it was a natural respite point for those who might want to enjoy that amenity. There's outdoor areas as well. So, there were some concerns at the last council meeting, and even at the informational meeting, is, you know, "Why didn't the city provide more information on the project?" And the reality is that this project has been in some form of discussion since 2015, and we've discussed it in many mediums. This particular chart has been on our website for a number of years now. It's dated June 6, 2016. And this particular rendering, although not the final rendering that's being implemented now, it's a few years old. It's three years old, but it clearly depicted a nature trail system going from Delia over to the Nature Preserve or near the Nature Preserve. And again, this, the reason it was discussed back in 2015 and 2016 is the city was in the process of developing its first-ever non-motorized transportation plan, which for a city our size, it was unusual that we didn't have one fully in place at that time. So, it was on our checklist. We wanted to get through that, and we now have it. And this trail, along with many other trails, was discussed as part of that plan. And here's just a sampling of other trail systems with the objective of also closing all of our sidewalk gaps throughout the city. We're probably about 90% there. The last 10% is the hardest, but that's a big part of our non-motorized transportation plan. Cleaning out the Clinton River was a big part of our plan. We were able to get a $5 million grant to do that. And you can see, even back a few years ago, here again, you know, the trail system was planned between Delia and the Nature Preserve. So, this is something that has not only been discussed at various forums, but there have been numerous public hearings showcasing these various trail amenities, including the one we're discussing this evening. It's just another map from our non-motorized transportation plan focusing on all the amenities across the city that we're looking at by way of non-motorized transportation. And then, some may recall, the Recreating Recreation Initiative that was launched in 2016, which included numerous public forums in the city, numerous discussions with various groups, and the magazine, which is mailed to every household in the city, which in this particular case, the Recreating Recreation Initiative was highlighted in the fall 2016 edition with a cover letter from the mayor, and about halfway through the letter, the trail is noted on the cover letter. In addition, inside the magazine, there's more detail on exactly where the trail was going. So, there has been significant discussion on this particular amenity, and in fact, then in November 2016, 26,420 residents voted for the trail as a component of the overall Recreating Recreation Package. Now, there were many other components of the package, of course, skate park, dog park, farmer's market pavilion, ice rink, community center, updating, upgrading all 26 neighborhood parks, this trail system, and the like, but it was part of a larger package. So, in conclusion, we want to continue to work with residents. We want to continue to make adjustments and do what's necessary before construction commences. And Mayor Protam Sarowski will be happy to address any questions the council may have. Otherwise, I'm sure we'll have some comments after, citizen comments, later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Council, any comments or questions for City Manager Vanderpoel? Okay, well, I think that that concludes that, so we'll continue to move on to item number six on our agenda, which is the public hearing portion of our meeting. So, at this point, we have only one item to address. We have to consider the application by Palazolo Family LLC for a residential planned unit development on approximately 19.5 acres situated on the east side of Ryan Road, north of 18 and a half mile, PPCM-1215. And we have a presentation by our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam, City Council, and Mr. Vanderpoel. Before you tonight is a public hearing for this planned unit development for Spring Meadows and Spring Brook Estates, number two. It's comprised of a number of properties, 42450, 42470, 42500, 42550, Ryan Road, as well as 4401 18 and a half mile road, commonly referred to as the stable property up on Ryan Road. This is, again, a planned unit development for a single-family development, single-family site condominiums. There's a total of 57 proposed as part of this overall development. The existing zoning for the property is R100. The development basically is in two phases or two portions. We'll go through those in the site plan in just one moment, but to briefly describe them, Spring Meadows, which is the western half of the development, comprised of 45 homes, lot sizes are generally about 7,600 square feet. Lot size is generally 60 by 127 and 90 by 127 on the northern end of the site, and you'll see why that's pertinent in one moment. The home size is proposed in there around 2,000 square feet, plus or minus, depending on the model which is chosen. Spring Brook... Spring Brook Estates, number two, is an extension of Saddle Brook. And those are 12 homes. Lot sizes are generally almost 11,000 square feet, 90 by 130 lots, customary for that area of the city. Those will be custom-built homes. And the planning commission did conduct their portion of the review at a public hearing on May 9th earlier this summer. They unanimously recommended approval of their proposed PUD. So this is the overall area of the site, aerial of the site, showing the top view and the property comprised of those multitude of properties that I listed earlier. This shows the overall zoning configuration. Again, everything within this area of the city is zoned R100. Master plan also calls for this area to be single-family residential with lot sizes and lot densities consistent with what the applicant is generally proposing. So to go through the planned unit development process, just to refresh the city council members' memories, as well as to provide some oversight to the general audience, so this PUD process is an allowance for the developer to basically propose a development that isn't normally considered within our zoning ordinance in the underlying district. To do that, the concept plan approval process goes through several steps. The planning commission does review this application as part of a public hearing. Again, that was done in May. The ordinance also calls for a second public hearing here at city council. That's obviously the purpose of tonight's meeting. Between the planning commission and city council, regardless of the action of the planning commission, a planned unit development agreement is developed with the city attorney's office and the applicant's attorney. That has been done. That is before you, should you decide to move forward with this application. And it basically locks the development in between the developer and the city itself. So what is being proposed is the development that will be approved or will be built if approved here by city council. From this point forward, if council does move forward with this application, site plan approval process would be handled administratively, like we do many site plans here within the city, as long as it's compliant with the PUD approval that is granted by city council. The timeframe's established for this is that the final site plan has to be approved within 12 months. Building permits to develop the property, 18, complete development within 30 months. Again, that's for actual development. Since this is a single-family residential development, the homes won't necessarily have to be built within that timeframe, but the overall development has to be ready to go. So this is the overall site as proposed. Again, Spring Meadows is the western half. Ryan Road is to the left-hand side of the screen. Again, these are 45 homes, basically 60-foot-wide lots on the interior. The corner lots are wider, to be generally compliant with the intent of our zoning ordinance, that corner lots are wider. If you remember, I mentioned a little bit earlier that lots on the north end of the development are 90-foot-wide lots. The developer did that to mimic the lots directly to the north, so that lots to the north within the abutting development are also 90-foot-wide lots. That development, when approved, utilized our planned subdivision option. So there's some open space in that subdivision as well. So that's why they got the lot reduction up there. To the far eastern half of the property is the extension of Saddle Lane. This provides an extension of the cul-de-sac that exists now. And again, there's 12 homes that basically surround this extension of the cul-de-sac. And those will be the larger homes on 90-foot-wide lots, 130 feet deep. The development portion on the west side will be private roads. The extension of Saddle Lane will be public road. It doesn't necessarily show up on this. The applicant has a better rendering of it when he gets up and does his presentation. He'll depict it a little bit better. Between the two developments is an open space area that provides a common walkway between the two developments, which connects the cul-de-sac itself to the overall development to the west-hand side, to the south end of Spring Brook Estates, number two, which again is the east side of the property. Large detention facility there that will serve as kind of a park-like setting. And then the applicant also has a common open space area, not merely just backyards, but common open space area along the Ryan Road frontage as well. So that's kind of the layout of the overall development in terms of lot sizes and configuration of the development. This is the landscape plan. So the developer is proposing, you know, street trees throughout the development, obviously extensive landscaping along the Ryan Road frontage, providing buffering along both the north and south property lines. The church to the south property line, the developer's proposing an extension of the trees that are already in place there. Further to the west, and then along the north side, the developer's proposing a series of evergreen trees plantings along the north property line to buffer where the abutting residential units are to the north. And then landscaping throughout the common open space areas as well. These are just some of the landscape details, similar type effects which the applicant will ultimately seek, again, if approved. In terms of the entrance feature, the bottom depiction there will be basically what the entrance will look like on a conceptual form. This is some of the applicant's other work that they'll basically mimic in terms of the entrance detail. As part of the PUD process, traditionally, we don't get to do this as part of a residential development, but again, as part of the PUD, you lock in an agreement between the city and the developer. These are the home styles that are being proposed to be built on the 45 lots. So mainly brick and stone. Again, these are about 2,000-square-foot homes. The applicant can go through the price point. I don't want to speak to that effect for him. But basically, very similar home styles to what we've been seeing proposed in the past year or so. We've seen several developments go for this market, which is a very high-end, 2,000-square-foot home on a smaller lot, trying to hit the baby boomers downsizing in terms of their overall housing style, as well as potentially a younger market, up-and-coming, so to speak, that doesn't necessarily want to be burdened by a significant mortgage, but also still have the niceties of a planned development. These are the overall floor plans as proposed, minimum of two bathrooms, two to three bedrooms within these units. And again, I'll kind of let the applicant go through what the niceties, so to speak, of the development may, or the houses may be. The eastern half of the development, or the 12 lots on the eastern half for Saddle Lane, again, those will be custom-built homes. The applicant has indicated that they're willing to kind of bind themselves to development guidelines, if you will, or architectural guidelines. So while each one of those homes will be built individually and custom-designed for those residents buying those lots, the applicant has indicated that the architectural theme will be similar. These houses will be bigger, generally speaking, about 500 to 800 square foot bigger at a minimum, depending on if it's one-story or two-story homes. These will all be side-entry garages. And on the east or the west portion of the development, the north lots will be side-entry garages, front-loaded garages for the remaining lots there. So with that, that is the proposal for the Spring Brook Estates planned unit development by the Palazzolo family. And with that, I'll answer any questions that the city council may have.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. And would the applicants like to come forward and have forth a presentation for us?
Give me a second.
They'll turn it up.
That's the same site plan that Chris just showed us. I'm Sam Palazzolo. This has been 20 years in the making since we did the last phase, so we're very excited and proud to present this. Chris was able to summarize six months of work in about six minutes, so kudos to you. We've brought with us the landscape architect and the engineers for the site, so they can answer any questions you may have about specifics. It's 57 lots. It's below the density allowed significantly. There's five acres of open space and 19 and a half acres. And there's walking trails from Spring Brook Estates through the cul-de-sac, through the open space with the gazebo all the way to 19 Mile Road. The 90-foot lots are the ones in the dark green, and the 60-foot lots are the ones in the tan. Other than that, I have no more to add to what he said, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Palazzolo. You can go ahead and have a seat, and we'll call you back if we need to. Okay, and now I'm going to open this portion of the meeting to public comment. Anyone for the public hearing, excuse me. And so, thank you, Mr. Kusubski. So does anyone wish to speak on this item? I'll take, Mr. Smith, come right up forward.
Good evening. I'm Paul Smith, resident, voter, citizen, taxpayer in Sterling Heights for 42 years, and I'd like to welcome Mayor Protam Sarowski to run the meeting. Thank you very much. I guess, I guess like Mr. Vanderpoel, I don't really have any new material for this meeting. This will be the same material that you've heard for the last 10 years, and as long as this goes on, you'll continue to hear it from me. R100, single-family residential, is the highest class of housing in Sterling Heights. Sterling Heights is a residential suburb. It's not Newark or Hong Kong. We're not out for maximum density, squeezing in all headcount we can. The people in this surrounding area have paid a premium to live in an R100 area, and here we're accommodating this developer to make profit maximize, make all the money he can by shoehorning in 60 and 90-foot lots in a R100 area. And you're going to put aside the rules, the zoning, everything that everybody else has paid money to comply with, you're going to brush it aside for this guy. Now, the previous developers built homes on R100 lots, and they made profit, and they made money at it. Oh, sure, you can put in tiny homes, subdivide it, cut it up little, squeeze in all you can, and make more money, but you could just comply with the zoning, comply with the law, do what's right, and put 100-foot homes in. But for some reason, it's anything to make a buck. More units, more people, and you're going to give the developer what he wants, just because you always do, but let the record show that not everybody agrees with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you much. And Mr. Smith, anyone else like to speak on this item? Mr. Schaaf, coming forward.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, City Council and residents. I spoke at the May 9th planning commission meeting for this project. Just for the record, it was funny, after the meeting, the Palazzolo brothers were shocked that I was in favor of the project. When they used to come for other projects here, I was against everything they did. Not because it was a bad project, because I grew up in Sterling Heights when it was farms. I didn't want to see anything developed, nothing. I liked the countryside and stuff, the horses and stuff. Well, this is 2019, and there's a big difference now, and their project is fantastic. I want to thank the stables for staying there as long as they did. It had to be a lot to pay taxes with the horse stables and stuff. It's going to be a great asset for the community and stuff. The project is well worth it and stuff, and I think it should go forward. It's not perfect, but you know what? The homes are nice, and the plan is nice, and I welcome them, and I hope everything goes well in their project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaaf. Mr. Jefferson, did you just want to come up?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. Could we have some kind of price on these units here? Because Mr. McLeod said something to me that I find kind of troubling. He was saying that it was, a lot of young people would like to move in here without a high mortgage. He's wrong. A lot of younger folks can't afford these places. Two, the younger people are looking to move into more of a downtown-type area. There are no amenities here for those folks. And older people, just looking to downsize, it's going to be a hard fight for them because this is priced too high. They're not going to move in there either. So can we find some kind of price for this? Also, I think the city, we need to start looking at some kind of lower-end type deals here, because we have, haven't looked out for people who are less fortunate in this community. And I'm not talking like less, less fortunate, but a moderate rate price for people to fit into this kind of community. It seems like we're going to hire in, hire in, hire in, and it's not going to be a good deal for us, folks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Yes, ma'am, right in the center?
My name is Christina Rubel, and I've lived in the city of Sterling Heights for over 50 years. I have lived on 18 and a Half Mile, which is going to be affected by this development. We bought our property about 40 years ago. And I wasn't going to talk tonight because I was in full support of the development. I know a lot of change has come. When we moved in, there were still walking the horses down 18 and a Half, and a lot has been developed, but when we bought it, we also knew what things were zoned. And as I said, I wasn't going to speak, but a couple of things troubled me. The first is that while some of the lots are going to be smaller, and mind you, we have 2 and 1/2 acres, so, and we are effective directly behind this development, they are going to be smaller than R100. But what someone failed to recognize is even though they're going to be smaller, and some are still going to be R100, out of the 19.5 acres of development, I understood that five acres are going to be left as landscape development area. So a lot of developers that come in are squeezing in homes to make a buck, which is true, but unlike this development, they are leaving a large portion as nature, which is what the area is. So while some of the lots are going to be smaller, the amount of nature that's going to be left and actually put in between the gazebo's and the trees, I think is going to be very, very much appreciated and does enhance the value of our homes. So, again, I repeat, maybe they are smaller lots, but when you consider all the landscaping and from what I've seen, because I've really researched this, he is putting in much more landscaping than actually is required. And for that, I love it, because when we bought it 40 years ago, we bought it for nature, and that's continued, even though development is part of life. That is it. The other thing that I didn't agree on is when Mr. McLeod had said that with the younger market, that is so true. Two of the lots, if they were available, are actually, could be sold today by two young people in their 20s. Because while the prices are maybe higher in some people's eyes, a lot of our youth, we're not giving them credit for, are looking for prices in those homes, or homes in those prices. The difference is that Sterling Heights offers a great development with great taxes and an excellent location. You couldn't ask for both. I mean, we built in that area because it was close to both counties, close to a hospital, close to a freeway. And again, beautiful homes, all the landscaping, great taxes, and people can afford them. So I do disagree with that. The market is there, and again, even for young and old, it's a perfect location. I love it. So I am totally for the development. I think it's beautiful. I think it beats coming in and knocking down every tree and not putting one thing up. I'm putting condo after condo on top of each other and really looking like more of a commercial area than the residential. I am full support of it, and I am one of those that is directly affected by it. Go for it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rubel. Anyone else like to speak? Nick, Mr. Castillo, come on up. Sorry, Nick.
Don't look anything like him.
Yeah, not a thing.
All right. Nick Cavalli, Sterling Heights, to clarify for everybody.
Get this right.
So I think this is a fantastic development. I am also sad to see the stables go, but I think this is a good use of the land. It allows us to keep some of that nature in there. But I do have to echo what Mr. Jefferson said. I do want to hear price points, because I am all for new developments, but the important thing is that the hard-working residents of Sterling Heights are able to afford the developments that we are putting forward in the city. But kudos to you. You guys did a great job with this piece of land.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalli. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Going once, twice? Thank you, Mr. Smith, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for hosting the meeting tonight, Mrs. Sarowski. Mrs. Mayor Protam, excuse me. I wasn't going to speak on this subject, however, it's just a coincidence that I have friends that live in that area, and I was speaking to a lady who was very upset, not about this particular project, because she probably doesn't even know about it yet, but she is concerned about on Ryan, in that area, north of 18, and in the... in the eighteen and a half vicinity. Her backyard is no longer there as she knew it. And I know it's private property, just as you, where you were growing up, that was private property that was sold to be developed, which I totally understand, but not everybody is happy about this. So, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Anybody else before we close the public hearing? Okay, well, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, do I have a motion on this?
Mayor Protem Saroski.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to approve the application by Palazzolo Family LLC for a residential planned unit development on approximately nineteen and one-half acres of property situated on the east side of Ryan Road, north of the eighteen and a half mile road, PPCM dash twelve fifteen, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the planned unit development agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support.
So, we have motion in support. Counsel, do we have any comments?
Mayor Protem Saroski, thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Palazzolo, if you don't mind, if you could please approach. Just a couple of questions. First of all, the, the price point was actually on my list to, to ask, so if you could cover that for us, I'd appreciate it.
Price point on the smaller lots and the ones that are ninety footers backing to Spring Brook Estates, those homes will fit in the same square footage as Spring Brook Estates. That's why we were making them eighteen hundred to twenty-six hundred square feet. Probably start just under three hundred thousand, and up to at least four, four fifty on those homes. They'll have a lot of high-end amenities. You can see from the elevations what was in there. We wanted to fit it in with a lot of the other homes we built in the area through the vineyards and the hunt club, to still fit in the area. I agree with Mr. Jefferson. Affordability is a major problem in housing, but not here. And this, this spot is, is more designed and utilized for what's built in the neighborhood. The estate lots are, they're some of the nicest lots we've ever done here in Sterling Heights. They back, they side up on the, on the east side is a big pond. Here is a big pond, the end open space. So, these, all these lots are gonna view the open space and big pond. These lots will back up to the detention that we're putting in, and Plum Brook Drain, actually, it's not Plum Brook Drain, it's, is it Plum Brook Drain in the back? Plum Brook Drain? And they will face those. The other lots on the east side, on the west side, will face the open space. So, those homes will start, uh, probably about five fifty and up. There'll be three-car garages, side entry, custom-designed.
Okay. You've been in this business a long time, and you've been successful in this business for a long time. So, as trends change, I'm assuming because we have the same-sized footprint home on smaller lots, that's what people are looking for, less maintenance, less upkeep. Is that what your experience is?
That, that is definitely the trend now. The big footprint lots are no longer in demand like they were in the nineties. They want smaller lots, but they want a, a nice home on those lots. People are downsizing, want first-floor master suites, and that's more popular than the big footprint lots. You're not seeing many of the big footprint lots anymore. They want open space, but they don't want all the grass.
Okay. I appreciate all the open space that you are keeping and the landscape that you have proposed and planned to do.
This has more landscaping than I think anything I've ever done in Sterling Heights before.
Awesome. Well, we always appreciate nature, so, okay, I think that's all my questions for you. Then, through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Mr. McLeod, so it was mentioned about the density. So, is really the density of this project more intense than what is intended, or because of the open space, it's less intensive? Can you, can you explain that?
In terms of, of density, so in terms of true zoning and how it lays out configure-wise, it's probably a little bit more dense than what would normally be expected here. Now, with that being said, the, if you take a theoretical sense of density, if you look at what the master plan calls for in terms of density, and what the PUD ordinance allows for as part of a density allocation, they're right on. I mean, so it's, it's, it's right in, in that wheelhouse, so to speak. So, it's just all a matter of how you calculate it, I guess. But, you know, the fact that, you know, there's so much open space here, it looks much more compact, much more, you know, when, when you see a black and white on, on what you're seeing on screen now, looks a little different than when you start looking at how Mr. Palazzolo had it on his screen, because some of that open space really does start to show. But to answer your question directly, what the planning department indicated was, as part of our review, in terms of a true development, being able to go in there, they're, they're over, but once you calculate in all the different factors of PUD, additional PUD allocation for density, as well as what the master plan calls for, they're right on.
Okay. And also, if we could go back to the last screen.
Is the landscape?
Yep, this one.
This is the same.
Okay.
This mine's in copies.
That's okay. So, so also through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Saddle Lane, is that a stub street in Spring Brook Estates that will be brought into this cul-de-sac, that opens up into the cul-de-sac?
That's correct. It is actually a stub. It's not an existing cul-de-sac. So, obviously, right at the property line, it's always been intended to be extended in some form or fashion. This one just happens to extend the cul-de-sac rather than create a more contiguous integration into a larger subdivision.
Okay. And this was passed unanimously at the Planning Commission?
Yes, it was eight-zero vote. There was one person absent.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Yarko?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Saroski. I just have one question. Through the chair to Mr. Palazzolo. What is your expected date for, your start date for the construction of this project?
Uh, we hope to start demoing over the winter, and hope to have our engineering plans in over the winter and approved, and hopefully start spring, summer of next year.
So, a model should be on site probably a year from now?
I would say longer than a year from now.
Okay.
Optimistically, I, I hope you're right.
Okay. I, thank you for, once again, investing in the city of Sterling Heights. We truly appreciate it. You're gonna bring a good product, and I'm, I'm, you know, hopeful that you're not gonna have trouble selling them.
It's been a great city to build, and I can say that.
Yes, okay. Well, you just keep doing that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem? Yes, Mrs.?
Kowski.
Kowski.
Through, I'm sorry.
Through the chair to Mr. Palazzolo. The Palazzolo family and I go back many, many years, even to your father, so. I want to say that you do fantastic work, but I would like you to just explain something for the residents at home. If we could see your plat, your, your drawing, the one that you had up just a second ago, where it shows the walking trails in the gazebo?
Yes.
Okay. This is very unusual, as far as a normal subdivision. And I just wanted you to point out once again that what you've done here is you have created a walking path for the residents to go on the outside, around the gazebo, and then out to Ryan Road. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then your retention basin, is that going to have like a fountain in it, anything to move the water, or is that just going to be a?
It would be a wet pond.
It would be a wet pond.
Yep. If you'd like to speak, go ahead and come up to the microphone, please, if you need to have them come up.
We won't want the water to be stagnant, that's for sure, whether it's a fountain or a bubbler.
Uh, Asil Petrus, the design engineer for the project, we will have a wet pond, probably four-foot minimum depth of the water in it. I'm not sure if you want to plan on having a fountain. It's up to you.
I haven't thought that far out, to be honest, but it depends. Is, how visible is it from those lots? I don't know. The only, the only two that would see that would be the two lots that back to it.
Okay. Just for a little background, you built in the northwest quadrant, the preserves. Did you also do Homorama?
I did Homorama, two Homorama houses, nineteen ninety-two. Our first house we built as partners, me and my brother, was in eighty-four in Sterling Heights at Nineteen and Chaney. So, I've been around a little bit, so.
Nineteen and Chaney, northwest quadrant, section five, section six. What else? Anything else come to mind?
Where I built was, we did the Sterling Heights Club across the street from Spring Brook, the vineyards down the street from there, ravines.
And your dad was involved at fourteen and a half in Ryan?
And there were six phases in the vineyards. Well, we have apartments at fourteen and Ryan, Sterling Heights, and the preserves are also ours. We have other apartments. We've done office buildings here and commercial property.
So, you've helped Sterling Heights grow.
Sterling Heights helped me grow.
To a beautiful community.
Thank you.
I wish you well on this. This is a very unique layout, in my opinion, and I think you did a fantastic job, and I know you're gonna sell out very quickly.
Thank you.
So, you'll have to line up something else, okay?
We will.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kowski. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I just have a few questions for Mr. McLeod through the chair. I think this is, this is like a wonderful development, but I'm a bit concerned about the sidewalk plan. I was hoping you'd go through that and explain it to me and the residents, I guess, residents and I.
Go ahead, Mr. McLeod.
I'd be glad to. So, the, the overall sidewalk plan for the development is a little bit of a deviation from what the city is used to, although in the northwest quadrant of the city in particular, it's not necessarily uncommon. But with that being said, so the eastern half of the development, the, the extension of Saddle Lane, will have full sidewalks both sides of the road, built as a traditional public roadway. As noted in the conversation, then, then there will be a sidewalk that comes off the end of that cul-de-sac down towards the detention pond, kind of come, hang, a turn to the west, and then go up between the two developments up to the gazebo, which is just to the west of where it connects with Saddle Lane, if that's a good description. And then the sidewalk will continue along the north side of what is deemed right now as Meadow Drive, so along the, the north side of those lots, out to Ryan Road. So, there are portions of the Spring Meadows development that will not have sidewalks directly in front of their houses. That was a point of a lot of debate when we were reviewing this administratively with Mr. Palazzolo. And so again, traditionally, the city wants to see full sidewalks everywhere. So, you know, that is one issue that we felt pretty strongly about, overall, that there's sidewalks should be provided, based on the lot configurations, based on how this is setting up. And this current configuration, it is not possible to truly fit sidewalks on both sides. So, Mr. Palazzolo came up with this configuration. To his credit, he's also indicated a couple, and a couple reasons as to why, you know, this works. One is that Spring Meadows is completely self-contained. There is no stub streets, so there is forty-five lots in here, and that's it. So, there will be no cross-connection to other subdivisions. There will not be a throughway, so to speak. So, the traffic will be contained to those forty-five lots there by limiting it. And then the zoning ordinance does allow for, when you go into a more traditional cluster or planned subdivision option, it does allow for a developer to create some, some leeway in terms of creating a, a alternative pedestrian plan, if you will. So, this is essentially his alternative pedestrian plan, which again, connects the two subdivisions together, provides ultimately for a connection all the way from Saddle Lane all the way out to, to Ryan Road. Again, we always like to see sidewalks on both sides of the streets, but, you know, this is the configuration that has come forward to this point.
Mr. McLeod, you know, I just talked with a resident the other day, who in the south end is having a sidewalk replaced, and he's being charged by the city three thousand dollars for new sidewalk flags to replace his sidewalk that hasn't been examined since nineteen ninety-six. And we're charging him three thousand dollars. I think that that's kind of insane to have a developer come up here and, and some of the largest parcels in our, in our property, estate subdivisions essentially, and not have sidewalk. 'Cause why would we allow, why would we allow, you know, why, why are we forcing, basically, a senior citizen to pay three thousand dollars for sidewalk in the south end, while letting a developer who's gonna make, I assume, a pretty good penny on this proposal in the, in the north end? On that alone, I'm gonna vote no. I just think that we talk about a non-motorized plan. We have people here who want to discuss our non-motorized plan for a trail, and why we're, we're putting it in. And then to have a developer in the north end not put that in, it's, it's one of our, our, basically, our foundational ideas, now that we want to fix and, and replace and add to our sidewalk plan. I just can't go forward with that. I, I like your plan. I think this is wonderful.
I have a suggestion.
I'm speaking right now, sir. I, I appreciate your plan. I think it's very nice, but at the same time, I think that it needs sidewalk. Now, you can respond.
I have a suggestion. Same amount of sidewalk, because I'm running through the open space in the detention area and through the gazebo, as if it was in front of every residential home. And it's usable. It's more usable. It's more practical. The, the twenty-five lots to the south have to walk across the street to have a sidewalk. It's self-contained. There's not gonna be any traffic. They can walk through the streets. I did the subdivision to the west Sterling Heights. There's no sidewalks there. To the north, the Sterling Park, no sidewalks there. The duplexes in the corner, no sidewalks there. So, it's been done many times in that quadrant. It's more common not to have sidewalks.
But if we want to link up our city, if we want to make it walkable and bikeable and drivable, we need to start someplace.
I respectfully disagree that this is more walkable and usable than having it in front of every home.
Well, we're gonna have to agree disagree on that.
I agree.
But I think that personally, it needs to have sidewalk. And I think any development that comes before this council should have sidewalk. We're talking about huge stretches of our city. I know we've, we're at ninety percent now, but there are huge stretches of our city, including the, the mound to Van Dyke area, that lack any kind of usable sidewalk. And if we let everyone come in and say, well, my one project is the exception to the rule. My one project is the exception to what we're trying to do going forward. I think that's unfair, and I think it, it gives developers a leg up over regular people who are being forced to pay for sidewalk. That's all I have, Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mr. Yanoz, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, well, I think that I, I will make some comments myself. And if you could, please put that back, the, the rendering of the lots back up on the screen. Thank you. I grew up in a neighborhood kind of similar to this. It was very self-contained. We just, we lived out, initially, it was out in the country, and we did not have any, any sidewalks at all. We biked, we ran, we played basketball and street ball and any kind of ball you could do out in the streets. Because we did not have through streets, and everyone was a neighbor, and everyone was a family member driving by, it was very safe. So, I don't find that it's necessary to have a sidewalk in front of every residence. And I don't think a lot of, every, not, sorry to respectfully disagree with you also, Mr. Radke, but I don't believe that it's also necessary for our city to always look so much like a city my home. I'm in the middle right here, right, right behind the council offices, and we have sidewalks. My, I have a corner lot. I've got lots of sidewalk. And, well, it's nice. It's good for the neighbors. It's good for me. They don't always like my dog barking at them, but it's, I would love to have not-so-much sidewalk sometimes. So, I think that there are people who would appreciate this. We still have the opportunity to link our city with this path that runs through the neighborhood and all the way up onto Ryan Road, so it does link them to a main road if there's any need to get up there. So, I, I think that's a beautiful project. I, I understand the price point for dual income, even a young, young couple, three hundred thousand is, is workable. The four fifty and five hundreds are obviously the more high estate and higher-end homes, but they're still beautiful. So, I, I think this is a lovely project. And without any further comments, I think we are ready to take a vote. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
No.
Motion carries, five to one. Thank you very much. And congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay, moving right along. We are at the consent agenda.
Or, or seven.
Oops, I'm so sorry. We have to adopt the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year. And is there anyone who needs to speak on this item? Anyone going once, going twice to speak on the consent agenda?
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
I'm sorry, on the ordinance adoption. I'm sorry, Jerry, on the ordinance adoption. I keep trying to get to that consent. Didn't mean to. Okay, and if not, counsel, we need a motion to approve?
Mayor Protem Saroski.
Mrs. Yarko?
Resolve to adopt the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I think it's been explained to us, and we certainly have, you know, explained it to the residents, so I think we could move on.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anything?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay, any counsel?
Madam Mayor Protem?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Radke.
I just wanted to further point out that I like that we're putting fifty thousand dollars into reserve. I just wanted to further point out that I like that we're putting $50,000 into reserves or, you know, running a tight budget we do in Sterling Heights. I wanted to point out.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. I agree. It's a good idea. Anyone else? Okay, without any further comments, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we can move on to the consent agenda. Anyone from the, thank you, Mr. Shea. You may come on out. Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor Protem and City Council. Questions I have is, um, regarding, on the consent agenda, number F, it's $473,000, K, $418,000, N, $306,000. And then you get down to O, it's $1,807,000 and change. I just think if you're going to put this kind of, uh, money on the consent agenda, you're just going to automatically pass it and go. But I think some of this stuff needs to be explained a little bit more, especially the one that's over a million dollars. I don't like the, I never liked the idea where you just put the stuff on the consent agenda and automatically pass it. I think, uh, some of this funding, um, that's a lot of money to spend and we don't get, you're not explaining what you're doing or what's happening with the money. So I don't like the idea. Some of it should have been a consideration or polled so you can explain it to the residents. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shea. Anyone else? Mr. Smith, come on up.
Uh, thank you very much. I more or less echo Mr. Shea's comments and also want to mention in, in the confusion of, uh, the Mayor Protem talking about the consent agenda and getting confused with the ordinance adoption, we sort of rocketed by the ordinance, uh, what do we call this? What were you calling that thing? The, uh, I guess the, the, boy, this agenda doesn't seem to, oh, appropriations ordinance. All right. Appropriations ordinance. Well, what's our budget? Two hundred and fifty million. And, uh, somehow the two hundred and fifty million got amended and we didn't even have a slide on the screen saying what the amendment was. I mean, did we amend it from, uh, two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty? Or what was the amendment? You know, amendments to the budget can be a lot of things.
Mr. Smith, one moment, please.
Excuse me? Well, I say, excuse me, Mr. Radke. I'm, I'm speaking, Mr. Radke. You can speak till midnight, but this is my time. This is my time, Mr. Radke. And you're not the mayor either.
We'll reserve your time. Go right ahead. Mr. Radke, go ahead. Point of orders.
The point of order is that we've already discussed the ordinance adoption. He's out of order because he's discussing the consent agenda. He's on the wrong topic right now. He's out of order.
Thank you very much, Mr. Radke. Uh, I wanted to speak about the ordinance adoption, but due to the confusion of the Mayor Protem of whether we're going to do consent or ordinance, we shuffled by it with no opportunity for comment. So I'm just, my comment is complete that we should have at least had a few lines of what we were amending and that we're going to amend the budget. Amending the budget is a big deal.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Now, all right, we're done with that. We're back to this. As, as Mr. Shea stated, now we're up to fifteen items on the consent agenda that totals to 3.2 million. And I guess the definition of pocket change that's not worth talking about has gotten pretty darn high. And, uh, I guess, uh, for Mr. Radke, I'm sorry if you got your college education down in the boulevard at an overgrown high school. It doesn't teach you manners.
Mr. Smith, please.
Please, uh, you know, you can speak till midnight. I've only got four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, Mr. Jefferson, please come on up.
Okay, um, Mr. Vanderpool, uh, I'm not new to the process or anything like that, but there's a lot of people here new to the process, but could you explain to them the consent agenda, um, to the, to the newer residents that's here and to the ones on, on TV? So they know what the process is about this, so they don't get confused, um, why, why these items are already being passed without discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anybody else like to speak on the consent agenda items? And we have nothing further? Counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mrs. Kaski?
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
The consent agenda has been moved and supported. All in favor, may I have an aye, please? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're going to move now to, uh, item nine, the consideration. The consideration is to consider approval of collective bargaining agreement and memo, memo, memorandums of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Michigan Association of Police Clerical Employees Association for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 3rd, 2019. And we have a presentation by our city manager, Mark Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. If you don't mind, I'll summarize, uh, both, uh, A and B under consideration because they're really identical. They're two collective bargaining agreements. So I'll condense them in my, uh, single presentation now. The term of the current collective bargaining agreements between the city and the Michigan Association of Public Employees Professional and Technical Employees Union expired June 30th, 2019. Similarly, the term of the current collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Michigan Association of Police, which is the Police Clerical Employees Association, expired the same time, June 30th, 2019. In anticipation of the expiration dates, negotiations have been ongoing. And thankfully, uh, we have two ratified agreements that I'll summarize as follows. The term of the proposed CBAs is four years from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2023. The union membership will receive, and both groups will receive increases in accordance with the following schedule. Uh, two and a half percent in the current fiscal year, two percent next year, two percent the following year, and in the final year, the fourth year, two and a half percent. The base medical and hospitalization will be the Blue Cross Blue Shield High Deductible Plan, which includes a $4,000 high deductible with a prescription drug benefit plan and annual health savings account contribution by the city of $2,400 for a two-personer family and $1,200 for single persons. Employees will pay 10% premium share implemented over the four-year of the CBAs, uh, which will begin as 5% in 2022 and 10% in 2023. The Blue Cross Blue Shield High Deductible Plan with the 10% premium share will be taken into retirement, uh, for those who are eligible for that in the CBAs. The annual extended service pay benefit is being increased by 10% at each level, and that is consistent with what has been done with, uh, previous CBAs approved by city council over the last couple of years. Full-time members receiving paid time off will realize an increase in the annual allocation at the 15 and 20-year level. Part-time members will also realize an increase in the annual, uh, paid time off, better known as PTO allocation, at the one and three-year level. Full and part-time PTO recipients will be allowed to elect payment for up to three days of unused PTO in June every year. Previously, any unused time was lost as of June 30th. The stipend paid to an employee that earned a master's degree is increased $250 a year for both full-time and part-time employees. City's annual contribution to the post-employment healthcare plan is increasing $600 for employees hired after July 1st, 2013, and $500 for employees hired between July 1st, 2003 and 2013. All other monetary benefits remain at the levels provided under the expiring CBAs. I would be remiss by not acknowledging the good faith and professionalism exhibited by both unions and their leadership teams, along with our assistant city manager, Jeff Bahorsky, and our HR benefits manager, Kate Baldwin, throughout the entire collective bargaining process that resulted in the agreements before you this evening. And Mayor Protem, with the above in mind, I respectfully request that the mayor and city council approve, uh, the agreements before you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. We are going to take both of these separately. So first, on the, uh, what would be considered A of the considerations that would be for the police officer, um, Michigan Association of Police Clerical Employees. Is there any public comment? Anyone that would like to make a comment on this item? Okay, counsel, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Radke?
Resolved to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandums of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Michigan Association of Police, Police Clerical Employees Association for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2023, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents required in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Is there discussion, Mr. Radke?
I really have none. I think it was well summed, summed up.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Yarko. Anything, any, any other counsel comments or questions? Okay, so we have no other discussion. Um, all in favor of this motion, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then for the second item, that is for the firefighters. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Well, I wanted to read, uh, to consider the approval of collective bargaining agreement and memorandums for understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Michigan Association of Public Employees, or MAPE, Professional and Technical Employees Union, for the period of 2019, 20, excuse me, July 1st, 2019, and June 20, June 30th, 2023, excuse me. And so this, uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on the Firefighters Association Collective Bargaining Agreement? The Michigan Association of Public Employees for the firefighters and professional technical union. Any comments from the audience? Thank you. Uh, could I have a motion? Motion to approve?
Mayor Protem.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolved to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandums of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and the Michigan Association of Public Employees, Professional and Technical Employees Union for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2023, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents required in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
I have no discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Radke?
None.
Any other council members? Okay, thank you. Uh, and, and that note, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Okay, thank you. And now we are moving on to item C. And this is to consider confirmation of the city manager's appointment of Melanie D. Davis as Community Relations Director, and we have a presentation by Mark Vanderpool, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sarowski. City administration has completed the process required to fill the currently vacant Community Relations Director position. After a comprehensive selection process, I'm pleased to report the finalists recommended for confirmation this evening comes from our own very backyard. Melanie D. Davis comes to the city with an impressive combination of extensive work experience and superior academic credentials. Ms. Davis commenced her career as a program manager with the Detroit Regional Chamber and rose through the ranks to the position of Vice President of Marketing and Communications. In 2006, Ms. Davis was hired as the president of the Macomb County Chamber and managed an organization with over an $825,000 annual budget. Ms. Davis then transitioned to Adcraft Club of Detroit as its executive director, where she grew its membership from 1,400 to 3,400 members over a five-year period. In 2016, Ms. Davis was hired by the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce and Industry as president and chief executive officer. Over the course of the past three years, Ms. Davis has refocused the chamber and introduced a number of unique events for the benefit of its business membership. And I might add, in that role, has worked very closely with the city on, uh, many projects, including Sterling Fest, Sterling Edge Awards, State of the City, and many other collaborative projects. Throughout her professional career, Ms. Davis has honed her exceptional communication and networking skills that have produced tangible results for her employers. Ms. Davis's impressive career track exemplifies her strong belief in continuous improvement, effective leadership, and an ability to multitask with positive outcomes. Ms. Davis graduated from Wayne State University with a Bachelor of Arts degree in public relations. She continued her academic studies at Wayne State by earning a master's degree in public relations and organizational communication. Ms. Davis has served as an adjunct professor at Eastern Michigan University and Macomb Community College, where she provided instruction on principles of public relations and marketing. Ms. Davis's professional memberships and community service are equally impressive. She has served as director of the following roster of organizations: Baker College, Innovate Mound Executive Committee, Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, Advancing Macomb, American Red Cross. Ms. Davis's commitment to community service has also not gone unrecognized. The American Red Cross bestowed its distinguished volunteer award on Ms. Davis in 2008. In addition, Ms. Davis was named to Crane's Detroit Businesses 2008 List of 15 Women to Watch. Ms. Davis is accredited in public relations by the Public Relations Society of America. She is a graduate of Leadership Macomb, Leadership Detroit, and the Center for Creative Leadership. Ms. Davis resides with her husband and children in Sterling Heights and has been an advocate for the transformative changes being effectuated throughout Sterling Heights through the visioning, through the city's Visioning 2030 Plan, our Recreating Recreation Plan, and our Safe Streets initiatives. Based on the qualifications set forth, I am respectfully recommending that the mayor and city council confirm Melanie D. Davis as the city's next Community Relations Director. And Ms. Davis is in the audience tonight. Not sure if she wants to address the, the city council, but if she does, maybe she might want to wait until after the vote. I respectfully request approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this? Thank you, Mr. Shea. Come forward, please.
Good evening again. Question I have, um, how many finalists were up for the job? And I don't know Melanie Davis. I've seen her around with the chamber. She's done a lot for business, a lot for other organizations. I just hope she can connect with the residents as well as she connect with businesses and everything else with the chamber. You can do a lot with the businesses, but she has to remember she has to connect with the residents first. We're the ones that grow the city and stuff. I don't care what she does for the businesses and stuff with the chamber. She has to make sure she knows the residents come first. I mean, the businesses are, we have to work all together as a team. I should just say that. So I hope she just remembers that she doesn't put anyone first, that we're all a team and we can all work together to make this a good community to live. So I welcome her to the job if she gets appointed, but, so good luck to her.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Um, Mr. Marshalons, did you want to come up?
My name is Harry Marshalons. I'm a resident of Sterling Heights. Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, speak before the council. The appointment of Melanie Davis, unfortunately, like many of us, we, I have no idea who she is. But I want to tell you, uh, from what, uh, our city manager has told us about her, she's got a lot of qualifications. I just hope she's got a strong back if this council keeps buying artwork at the money they've been spending. I mean, eighty-some thousand dollars on a tree that looks like the last palm tree alive in Key West after the hurricane. And then the halo. I've never seen a halo like this. Halos are always like this over somebody's head, and they have some great meaning. This one cost us a million, one hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars to buy it and put it in. And then we didn't even put it in Sterling Heights. We put it in the MDOT area. Fortunately though, I can always blame it on Utica.
Thank you, Mr. Marshalons. Anyone else like to comment? Okay, counsel, thank you. I think we are, uh, we need a motion to approve?
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Thank you, Mrs. Yarko.
Resolved to confirm the city manager's appointment of Melanie D. Davis as Community Relations Director effective July 15th, 2019, in accordance with the charter of the City of Sterling Heights.
Support.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Mrs. Yarko, any comments?
Well, first of all, hopefully, if everything was well-welcome by Melanie, but we all had the opportunity to sit down and express our concerns. We knew that, reading Mrs. Davis's background, that she certainly was qualified. But just like with any other job position, and certainly with the city manager's appointment, we might have different concerns and different questions that he would even ask. We all had the opportunity to meet with her and express those concerns, and she answered all of my questions that I had. So I'm very confident in this appointment and know that she's going to work in the best interest of the City of Sterling Heights. And she is a resident of the City of Sterling Heights, and how often do we say we want to employ somebody that actually lives here? This is our opportunity, so, nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Yarko. Mrs. Schmidt?
I echo Mrs. Yarko. We did all meet with Mrs. Davis, and I too brought up some concerns that I had and was very satisfied with her responses. We have seen Mrs. Davis in action for a few years now in the chamber setting, and she has interacted well and co-mingled well with our Community Relations Department on various projects. So it's kind of an easy slip into, you know, there will be a learning curve for her, of course, but she's also very familiar with a lot of things that already occur in that department. So I am as well very comfortable with this appointment. I love that she lives in Sterling Heights, and she cares and loves her community and wants to see good things in the future, and so I look forward to working with her, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Counsel, anyone else? Mayor Protem. Mrs. Kozki.
I also had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Davis. Her credentials are very, very impressive. But what I liked the most was when I asked her, what are your thoughts about the city's ability to communicate with the residents? And she told me what she knows, how to do it, and what she would do if she were our Community Relations Director. So I'm looking forward. I hope she is approved tonight, because I think we will then have a fantastic way to communicate with our residents, which we have been lacking for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozki. Anyone else? Counsel? Mr. Reiki?
I also had the opportunity to talk with Ms. Davis. I think she's going to be an excellent Community Relations Director here. I think that Bridget's a hard act to follow in some areas, but Melanie assured me that she's going to continue the public art program and our outreach to the community. Just on a personal note, I've always been impressed by Ms. Davis's willingness, or Mrs. Davis's willingness, to go above and beyond. You know, every volunteer event I can think of, she volunteered just as a member of the community. And she's been, from Sterling Fest, to our Music in the Park, to so many events we put on the city, she went out of her way to make an effort to support her community. As someone who's helped us a lot, I like that she lives in the city. I think it's very important. I think she's going to do a splendid job. I think we've been missing some of the outreach lately because Bridget's been gone, and I welcome her, and I wish her good luck on her job.
Thank you, Mr. Reiki. Anybody else? Okay, Mr., I will make some comments as well. First, I'd like to reassure Mr. Shea. I've seen Mrs. Davis in many community, just private citizen events. She shows up, I see her at restaurants a few times. She's very engaged with the community. She talks to people, very outgoing. And even though, yes, business as a chamber director was her job then, she does, I believe, know that the city and the residents are her job now. But it's great to have a bridge between the residents and, as you said, make us a team, help bring that team together. So I am in full support of Mrs. Davis becoming our Community Relations Director, and I look forward to working with her. So with that, counsel, we need a vote. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Welcome. Would you like, yay, let's say. Congratulations. Please, Ms. Davis, come forward with some comments.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you, city manager Vanderpool. I'm really excited at this opportunity, and, boy, there are some big shoes to fill, going all the way back to Pat Lehman, Steve Gittar, Bridget Kozlowski. I hope to do the city proud. Yes, to alleviate some of the concerns of the community, I have represented many business organizations, but I think one of the things that stands out about our Chamber of Commerce here is that we do so many events that are really for the residents. We are engaged with community events like Sterling Fest, like our food truck rally, and the State of the City address. So, and as a resident myself, I share a lot of your same concerns, and so I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to engage with the residents and to dialogue with the residents, and just to continue moving forward some of the great things that our city is already doing, and continue to expand on those, to keep this city the vibrant and exciting community that I've raised my family in, that I was raised in, and that I've grown to love. So thank you very much.
Thank you again. Congratulations. Okay, and moving right along, final item of our consideration is to consider the appointments to City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. And we have one applicant, and that is for the zoning Board of Appeals to a term ending June 30, 2022. We have one applicant, his name is Eric Castiglial. Is there anyone in the office, the audience, who would like to speak on this item? Okay, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Protem Sarowski.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolve to appoint Eric Castiglial to the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term ending June 30, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No.
And, Mrs. Yarko, any discussion? Okay, counsel, anything? Okay, and so then we need a vote. All in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and congratulations to Mr. Castiglial, too, being appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, so that concludes our business portion of our meeting. Now we move on to communications from citizens. So anyone who would be interested in coming up to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda, I'm going to start from right to left. So I'm going to start with Mr. Marshalons. Whoops, oh, you're breaking our equipment.
Stop the timer.
Stop the timer. Got to pick up the little puffy thing.
Give it your own strength.
I think, does it screw on?
There we go. One of the things I wanted to talk about today is the budget, and I know we're going to be voting on this special millage. And as much as I hate to give the council more money to spend on trivia, artwork, and such, I want you to realize that it's important that we are secure in our lifestyles. We have to have a good police department. Well, we need an excellent one. We do have one. We need an excellent fire department, and we need wonderful city employees that support us. But the other day, a policeman came to my door, and he wanted to use my yard to train a police dog. And I said, well, certainly, you know, isn't like I'm a council member who they're going to find dope in my, you know. Anyway, we, he walked around the house, did a real nice job circling around. Then they walked down the street to a park where they deposited something that had been presumably stolen from my house. And they got a police dog out of the car. The dog came in, sniffed around, beelined it right down to the park. Now, police dogs cost a lot of money, but it's like our Army, Navy, Marine Corps, and Air Force. If we want to be secure, we need them. So I'm going to say we definitely need to pass that millage issue. But at the same rate, I got to say, if you're a burglar, I would look for a different vocation, because that dog will find you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshalons. Anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, I'll start with Mrs. Early. Go right ahead, please. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. City council and residents, and Jasmine Early, and I'm here too, in support of the residents who continue to oppose the building of the trail. Thank you, Mrs. Kozki, for your request to take action last meeting and to postpone the start of the trail, the project. Although the city tried to do what should have been done in the past, the residents still are in disapproval of the project. Issues are raised regarding this project. After meeting Andrew Hartz, the district supervisor for the Water Resources Division, Eagle, residents gained valuable information, environmental information. However, our efforts to work with him and the information from the city has been hindered. We have, I have FOIA documents from Eagle, which used to be N D Q, and from the city, and the FOIA documents from the city were denied because the name submitted didn't show anywhere, there was no information about it. However, in June 24, I had a long meeting with Mr. Hartz from Eagle, and he stated, he sent me to the city to FOIA the documents. On the 25th, he gave me a submission number, which I read H N Q K 7 B 9 F S 2 Q B. In that request that I already FOIA, Eagle also, is something going on with the two, the city and Eagle, that the FOIA are not being submitted? I have a copy of the FOIA here, results are not being given. At the meeting also, Mr. Hartz mentioned the flood plan. So he sent me to the FEMA, and please, if I can have the camera here, this is the area, and if you can read here, this is in a special flood hazard areas. Here are the maps for you to check. The drain will be, is in that area. At the meeting last Tuesday, the proposal was changed. Part of the proposal, and to Mr. Reiki, I was not lying to people. We had the blueprints, the original blueprints. We didn't know the city had met with some residents, moved the trail from one side to the other. Please, those residents there, but the residents in the other side are upset now. So no, I was not lying to people. Do not slander my name, please. At that meeting, residents left with the feeling of division among them. Their proposal only pleased some, the change. So I'm here to propose something else. The residents are still in, what it comes down is to litigation against the city from the contractor, or litigation against the city council from the residents, or what a better solution than to work with the residents, and I would like to present a solution for that issue. If we go to Delia Park, forget about the trail where you are proposing, and here is Delia Park. I was there on Friday. Delia Park had this line drawn in the lawn. I found out that there was a race going on, and I had done races in Dodge Park. That is, in Friday, 28, there was a race. So this was the track for that race. Wouldn't it be even better to please the residents and please your Christmas wish list, which is the trail, by doing the trail in the Delia Park? In that way, everybody will be happy, halting the current proposal trail, and employing the concept of the three mile.
Mrs. Early, I'm sorry, your time is up.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate your comments.
Can I just conclude? All the proposed trail, consider the new trail proposal, and by all means, keep the residents informed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was fast.
I know, it goes fast.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents would like to make a comment? Nick, I'll take you in the back. Mr. Cavalli?
Going along the same lines as what Ms. Early was speaking on, I understand the concerns of the residents when it comes to the building of this trail. However, this discussion is three years too late. This is going to happen. The bringing it back up and the continued just protest and raucous discussion that can happen from this is clearly a campaign ploy and nothing more.
Please allow.
Gentlemen? I'm just going to start, I'm going right to left, so Mr. Shea, you're closest to the back and closest to the right. Come on in.
Thanks. You're doing a good job. I remember some of the meetings, and when you were on that other committee, I wasn't really nice to you.
It's okay. You taught me well.
Yeah. Good evening again, Jerry Shea Sterling Heights, the mayor, pro tem, and counsel. First thing I want to ask is, if you have a chance tonight or next council meeting, give us an update on the Upton House. I know it's not going to be ready for Sterling Fest, I already know that, but just if you could give us a brief update of what's happening and where it stands. And regarding bike paths, I just want to mention the Sterling Relief Drain, I was driving by there today, and they had the butterfly sign up and everything. I personally feel the city missed out. The bike path should have been built. If you go to Rochester, Oakland Township, they have bike paths that go through there, they go past $5 million houses. They go by houses that we don't even have in Sterling Heights. I travel all the different bike paths and stuff, and it's amazing regarding crime and everything. You think someone's going to have a $5 million house next to a bike path, and he's going to worry about crime? I don't think so. They love it. The neighbors love it. It's a great asset to the community. And regarding the bike path by the nature preserve, what I want to know is how much, how many acres is the nature preserve? How much of the pathway is going to be in the nature preserve? Because I want to see it as a passive park. I don't want to see it developed. I was there when the governor cut the ribbon for that park. I was, Councilman Kozki was at the meetings, and she was really a proponent about keeping it as a nature preserve, before all these neighbors were saying. She fought hard to actually preserve the property, and I thank you for that. You were the original. I mean, it was amazing, the meetings and stuff, what happened. And now all the neighbors are worrying about the, they weren't there. I was there watching it, and the one man that did it, he went up there, he paid for a tree count and everything of the trees there, and I just don't want to see it overdeveloped. I have nothing against the trail. I think it's going to be worthwhile for the community up there. You're not going to have a problem with crime, you're not going to have the issues, and eventually it may connect the other parts of the city. So one thing I was talking to Councilman Kozki, and I thought it was a nice idea, we do need a bridge where Klineau used to be, with a bike path to cross over, to connect all the trails and stuff, instead of using shanor in the sidewalks. That was a great idea. I like that idea. Thank you for bringing that up. That's phenomenal. I've heard other people, that's a good one. And the cost is worth it, because you're connecting not just Metro Beach, the state is building a trail from the U P all the way down through here, through Macomb County and stuff. I don't know if you know that, but they all want them eventually connected. So I got one minute, I got to make this quick. Last thing I want to say is, I want to thank the mayor, Mayor Protem and the council for the support of the library. What a fantastic place we have. All the programs involved, the staff, Tricia, Jennifer, Debbie, the historian and all that, what a crown jewel, what a place of magic. And I want to thank you for supporting the Children's Garden. They're going to be building a chessboard there, cementing with life-size chess things and checkers and stuff. I really want to thank you for the support of the library, and the director, Tammy Turgeon, and the staff there. They do a fantastic job, and what a really nice jewel we have for this community. So I really appreciate it. And I heard all the updates and stuff for the library, what's going to be happening, the improvements, not just for the Children's Gardens, but the other things. So I just want to personally say thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. Jefferson?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. I usually like to let the guest speak, but we're going left to right. Where do I start? First of all, we got a new community communications director. Hopefully, she could work with the Sterling Heights Chamber to get the, meet the candidate... Hopefully she could work with the Sterling Heights Chamber to get the, meet the candidates at night. It's very important, as you see, because people would like to ask these people questions that they need to answer, just not two or three of us coming in the morning and trying to ask questions and not getting any answers. Number two, those people with the, the bike path, as you heard probably during the week, and at the last meeting, it was 26,000 people who voted for the recreation of Sterling Heights Millage. But what they're not telling you, it was pretty close to 26,000 people who voted against that thing, too. I think it was only a vote of 700 people, or 700 residents, that, that was the margin of error split between the two. So we could throw that out. Another question I have is to Mike Radke. I would like to know how you are advising your constituents, as we've learned that Macomb County is putting on the ballot also a tax increase that will raise everyone's taxes up to 90, on the average of $98, for a new police precinct, and not a, a new community, county jail. We also got this millage going on here at Sterling Heights as well. So I'd like to know how you're informing your, your people on how to vote for that. As I always say, you guys could, everyone could check the videotapes. I've said this before, each person in your own household, please go ahead and look inside your own to vote for those tax increases. If you can afford it, go ahead and do it. If you can't, don't do it. Don't be afraid, because, see, I was here, and I know how, how this got started. It was me and Jeff Norgrove asked to raise the taxes for the, the police millage. We go back to those days, the saving the streets. And at that time, Mayor Taylor told us that we were fear mongering, and that wouldn't happen. And a few weeks later, the city council flipped, and we needed it. Now, this is no savings to people, because if you look at it, this was a six-year millage that they imposed on us, and it was supposed to come off the books. It's off the books. Not even proposing to put it back on the books, but at a 10-year rate, even though they saying that it's one mill less, you add in four years, so I don't see how we could get a savings for, for that. I believe that's all I have for tonight. And Mr. Vanderpoel, could you please answer that question I asked earlier? Like I said, it's important. People starting to get involved, and they're looking into this, into stuff now, so please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Ma'am, I know that you have been waiting, so I'm gonna go start with, continue with the right. Get there.
Hi, I'm a resident on Pond View at the northernmost point of where the trail's going to be coming through, so it definitely has a direct impact on me, my family. First of all, I want to say thanks to the council members who took the time to come out last week and actually walked part of that trail, so you got a bird's eye view, or a ground view of what we're going to be dealing with and, and our vantage point. So hopefully that opens your eyes a little bit and can make you understand why we're so passionate about trying to not see this go through. But it sounds like it's already going to go through, so I'm not going to reiterate anything that's been said before. It, it has all been said. I'm hoping, though, that the council will do as you indicated, that you will work with the residents. Uphold your commitment to take our thoughts, considerations into mind as this progresses to move forward. Come November, I understand there's another vote coming up. I can tell you that there's a lot of people who oppose this. You will probably likely lose a lot of votes. I can't speak for anybody specifically, but although those end results of the votes, whether you make it on council again or not, might not affect your seat. It probably leave a bad taste in a lot of people's mouth. I can speak for myself on that, but just something to think about from a resident's And I hope that next time something like this comes up, you might think a little bit more about being fair to the residents who truly affects those of us who have this going to be running through our backyard. So that's just something to think about the next time around. Mr. Vanderpoel, you gave a good overview at the beginning of the meeting with the renderings. That was helpful. I hadn't seen that before, so that was good to see. Some other questions that came to my mind from that, if you could address later. As the path is going to cross 19 Mile, there are a lot of geese over there around those ponds. The geese can cause cars stop, and so hazards is my concern. And the bike, or this trail's going to go through there, I don't know what the consideration is in terms of, is there going to be pedestrian kind of signs there? What's going to be happening there? It's just going to be more traffic across 19 Mile. Certain times of the year, it's a bad thing with the geese, because they do stall up traffic. And along the trail, I don't know if this was mentioned or not, are there going to be garbage cans along there? You already mentioned that the snack bar at, over at Beaumont, you know, will be open. People can use the restrooms there. I'm wondering if there's going to be water fountains anywhere along the path, you know, usually on paths at one end or another, there is opportunity for water. Also, the trees and the renderings, that looks great. I'm hoping that's going to be maintained. I'm assuming that's going to be maintained by the city. Having planted trees myself in my own yard takes a lot of upkeep in the beginning, a lot of monitoring and maintenance. So I hope that money isn't spent on the trees and then having them die off. I hope it's a good project. Still not in favor of it, but it looks like it's going ahead, and I have spoken with every resident-
Okay, ma'am, your time is up, so quick.
Okay. All right. On Pond View, and I can just say, nobody's in favor on mine of Pond View.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
My name is Kevin Hanson, and I am here to support the, the path going through. I would like to say, I've been a, a resident of the city since before it was a city, since 1965. I have, I guarantee, used the paths within Sterling Heights more than anyone else has. I have run a documented over 80,000 miles on paths in Sterling Heights. It goes back to the mid 80s, when myself and Tom Chappell and Joe Delia walked back through all of Dodge Park to collect what was Klineau then, I know it's not Klineau anymore, to Riverland Park, and there was only a half mile paved back there. And we walked through all seven miles of that in both directions with city engineers and everything else, mapping out where we thought that path should go. That path is a pride of our city right now, that path that goes from side to side. There also were residents that were outraged, that lived on the, along the path. Being in the city as long as I have, I've also watched as some of those houses have come and gone, as far as, I mean, the residents of those houses have come and gone, and it was kind of a, kind of a weird thing in my, in my heart, when I watched their advertising to sell their properties, and it said, conveniently located next to the path in Sterling Heights, Dodge Park, and it was a selling point of the house, and these were same residents that were not happy with it coming through at the time. So I can totally understand their fears, because they don't know what it is and don't understand yet what it is. I can also promise you that, that as far as garbage and things, I could promise you that the running community, we will do cleanups through there. We will do them. I know, because we've done them on every other path as well. I could say that, because I know that the running community will step up for that. I can also say, I love the drinking fountain idea. I don't know if it's accessible, the city water and all of that, but I'm willing to pay for the first drinking fountain that you put in along those lines as well. So you could take me up on that. I want to thank the city council for the entire project. I honestly don't know where the city councils, I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes, I honestly don't know the answer to this, level of authority is to stop something that we have already voted on. We've already, we've already approved this, and I don't know if you theoretically can stop something without us voting on it again, because we've already approved this. We want this, we, as city members, and I understand that not everybody behind me does, but I'm just saying that there's a large portion of us that do, and the, sometimes the squeaky wheel is what you hear here in front of you, and I'm here to say that there's a whole bunch of us that already voted on this. And the fact that they're not here is because we thought it was settled. We thought we already voted on it, and so that's why they're not here. So I want to thank the council for everything you've done. I would like to mention that I have businesses in four different cities, and home, own homes in four different cities, but at the same time, I've chosen to raise my family in Sterling Heights because of the council, because of the things that you guys have done, and for what you've done for our community. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Well, it's rare, I guess, in the meeting, I ran into, or Mr. Radke and Mr. Vanderpoel both mentioned something I agreed with, the importance of having continuous sidewalks throughout the city. And Mr. Radke was talking about a little cul-de-sac in a, in a condo development, didn't have a sidewalk. Let's get, let's get the big one here, 18 Mile Road. From Mound to Van Dyke is the Great Wall of China, that there's no way you can get from one side to the other without having a car. I, I drive across 18 Mile all the time. Actually, I ride bikes quite a bit, too, but I would never ride my bike across 18 Mile, although I have to see some poor people, apparently they can't afford a car, they're walking or riding a bike across 18 Mile. So we'll just start from my way. I come over here, we got Fudd Rutgers, Utica Community Schools, E R Industrial, they're good citizens, they got a sidewalk in front of our house. And then we come to Enterprise, I guess we had a Trekkie in, in the past that named the street Enterprise. But then, the Sterling Heights Death Marsh, 2,000 feet, where people that can't afford a car have to walk in a gravel and risk their life along 18 Mile. Well, who's the bad citizens? Oh, Sterling Heights DPW and the Electric Company and the Sterling Heights Retention Pond. So two of the worst, the worst people, the worst property owners of Sterling, they think life is cheap and sidewalks are expensive. So we get over to the county, there's a little bridge, and they've got what passes for a sidewalk across the bridge. And we come back to Utica Community Schools, they got their bus yard, and like, like good neighbors with a big budget, they got a sidewalk. Then we go over to the, the 1,000-foot death trap, KBC Tool. I buy stuff in there, they're a prosperous business, I think they could afford a sidewalk. And then what I call the, the 60-70 warehouse. So warehouse, it's just got 60-70 18 Mile, I don't know what they do in there, but they got lots of tractor trailers and a lot of employees. In fact, they bought out a residential home, demolished it, and made it into a parking lot. Somehow they went from residential to industrial, and they didn't get forced to put in a sidewalk. So, you know, if we want to put in this trail to nowhere through people's backyards, it's some, some, I don't understand why Mr. Vanderpoel and these people are so hell bent on doing this, that it's almost like some gangsters have a gun to your head, they're going to shoot you if you don't build this path. I, I don't, I, I can't comprehend the motivation of why the city manager and the council is so onto this path, when with no right-of-way problems at all, you're, you're going to put a trail in these people's backyard, but you don't have a sidewalk in your own front yard. So we're going to have a, a massive DPW building expansion, so we can have a big repair garage and a conference room for a big DPW, but you won't pop for a sidewalk on your own lot. How hypocritical can you be? Well, it's like about 23 seconds left. You said there's never been an incident with the parks? Well, yesterday, we had a property invasion in our backyard from boaters on the river that you people made possible. So now my time's up, I'll, I'll just leave and let my wife finish the presentation. Since the boaters threw this in my backyard, I'll leave it for you. To the neighbors, this bike trail, you think you won't have trash? I got trash in my backyard because of one of your developments.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, sir, please.
Good evening, City, Mayor Proton and City Council. I'm a business owner. I attend a lot of meetings. Tonight, this first time, I raised eight times, and I can get a chance to speak. This is the first time, okay? And I spent all my focus on my business before, until June 18, when I learned from my neighbor that city would like to build a trail in, in my backyard, okay? For my neighbor, there is in front of their master room, okay? From that point in time, all changed. I meet a lot of residents, like Ane, okay, Texas race, Ane Centra, okay, Amila, John, our Nicole, okay, Ron, and I met a lot of people. This is different than I met before, because I met my supplier, contractor, my employee, okay, my customer. Right now, I'm different. And one thing, Mr. Radke mentioned one insane about the sidewalk for the Parazonas project. I would, I would say insane with this trail. Okay, Spain, okay, wasting 2.5 million taxpayers' money to build a text trail in the taxpayers' backyard and their master room. How can we have this kind of government? Okay, and one thing, Chinese Communist government is notorious in terms of a government of the people and for the people, okay? But they still retract their tradition bill under the strong protest in Hong Kong people. If you guys still fall through for that, under the very big opposition for that, you guys is worse than notorious Chinese Communist government. And one thing is very important, that according to the communication between Jasmine and Eagle, okay, which is, I guess lots of residents do not know that, which is, I checked that, Michigan Department of Environmental, Gray Lake and Energy. This one should be approved by Eagle, but until right now, still not yet approved, still not yet approved. So this is not a down deal. Okay, this is not a down deal. Okay, I appreciate that we can delay furthermore, okay, to understand the voice of all the residents, okay? The people over there that's mentioned, I did not see they show up during this period. They are not deep beside the rail, so they, they are not care. This, this is other business. Okay, so this is what I'm, I, I feel. Okay, this is the second time that I joined the city council, okay? And I feel very strongly in my heart, this government is not doing- And I feel very strongly in my heart, this government is not doing for the residents here, okay? If they fall through, we need to, okay, change that in next election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Smith? Please, no comment, no applause, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Hello again. This is Moira Smith, and I'm from Sterling Heights. And I really liked Jerry's idea about the Shaner Bridge. In fact, that's something we talk about a lot at our house, because I am a bike rider and a walker, and I think it's very needed. I'm here to talk about some things, the issue yesterday that happened at my home, which we did file a police report about. It boils down to this: private property rights, the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution. And you guys took an oath to support the Constitution. And property rights are sacred, and I've said this before up here. And that means we should have common values in our society, and without that, we're in trouble. And what happened yesterday, I think, is a reflection of the attitude of people, and it's condoned by the city by promoting what is going on in our Parks and Rec Department. And I'm going to digress a little bit. Yes, there were so many thousand votes for the recreating recreation tax. However, there was almost the same amount of people that did not agree with it, and I still don't agree with it. But back to the topic about our property rights. When people don't respect your property, and the city doesn't seem to care about people with property, but that they are giving people the idea that they have the right and the privilege to invade your property, which happened yesterday on my house, they came, and they loitered, and they littered. Do you want people at 3:00 in the afternoon having their tea time with canned wine cooler or whatever it is, the adult beverage they were enjoying? I didn't appreciate that. My husband just happened to come upon them, because in the process of doing his yard work, and then they scattered, and they dumped their stuff, just like he dumped here. I'm going to address the issue of crime. It seems that it's forgotten about the poor young girl on the McComb Orchard Trail that was murdered on that trail. And that was a very tragic thing that happened in the county on a trail. It does... Crime does occur. Loitering occurs. Drinking on someone else's property occurs. I think that's about wraps it up for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Please, residents, we do not applaud during this. It just disrupts the meeting. Thank you. And the next... Anyone else like to have any comment? I will take Linda. Come on up.
Hi, Linda Comer, resident of Sterling Heights, Mayor Protem, members of the council. First of all, I want to say, I voted no for the Parks and Rec, because I didn't want to spend more money. Totally will admit why. Didn't look into it, didn't care. It passed. I am the first one that's there at Dodge Park. I take my grandson over to the splash pad. I enjoy all that, the paths that are in Dodge Park. I totally enjoy it. So I have to pretty much go, well, yeah, it is worth the money. I totally appreciate it. Two weeks ago, we stood here and talked about the trail. I live on the south side of Nineteen Mile, so our neighborhood was going to be affected. I was against it. I think that part of it is that fear of change. My husband used to say that there's two people that like change, and that's cashiers and babies. I am neither one, so change is hard for me. But then, Mrs. Kosky asked that you put it on hold. You respectfully did so. You all listened to us, because within a week, you sent out communication to those of us that it was affected by this trail, and invited us to Velocity, and had a meeting and spelled everything out. And in between, Mr. Vanderpool and Mr. Bahorski met with one of my neighbors to spell out and say, they walked the path, and they revisited and did something that made more sense. I tried to go back there, but there's too many trees, and I finally gave up. So it's too hard for me as a person that's not exactly sure where the path's going. But I guess my point here is, thank you for listening to us. Thank you for taking that time. Thank you for the meeting that you presented to us. I was very impressed with how quickly that happened, that you respected our stance. I do feel that fear is not exactly a great motivator here. I try not to operate my life that way. In between those two weeks, I've tried to read, do a little bit more research, do my homework. One thing which I didn't do back in 2016, totally not aware of this project, because I wasn't paying attention, so shame on me. I also didn't know until two weeks ago that where the Plum Brook drain was. I don't pay attention to signs. I was driving down Ryan Road, a half mile from my house, I see the Clinton River watershed, Plum Brook Trail, or whatever it's a drain, and I just went, oh, my God, I've lived here how long and never noticed that sign? So, you know, shame on me. I don't pay attention to signs. I know where I'm going. Why am I going to look? So several of my neighbors are not here. I've talked to a couple, because they have changed their opinion about this trail. They are not opposed to it anymore. I have one neighbor that actually wants her name off the petition. I said, I don't know how you do that. But she wanted me to voice that, Angela. She's up north. So I just want to say, mostly, I'm not opposed. This might end up being one more surprise to me, something that I use, because I do ride my bike. And honestly, it's not safe to ride in some of those sidewalks and streets, because, number one, the people in the streets drive like maniacs, and when I try and do the sidewalks, there's people blocking with their cars. Isn't that illegal? So maybe I'll use it. I don't know. But in looking at it, and thankfully you revisited, I'm very much appreciation of you doing that. And yes, stand here, no longer opposed to the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Comer. Yes, ma'am, all the way in the back. No rush. Ms. Ruska, can you help her with the microphone when she gets up here, please? Whichever one you would like. It's fine. You'll be heard from that one.
Well, I have a direct question for Mr. Vanderpool, if possible.
You can pause it. He will not answer it to you at the moment, but he may answer it at his comments. But go right ahead.
Okay. The picture that you showed of the Sterling Cafe at Beaumont, did you actually go to the bathroom there? To find it? That's what I want to know. If he knows exactly where they are? Because I know that area of the hospital decently well, so that's why I wanted to have him answer that question. That's all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Oh, Nancy Hoffman, Sterling Heights, Michigan. And I've been a resident here for 27 years straight.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, any other... I'll let Nancy get back to her seat. No rush, Nancy. Anyone else on the left side? Oh, sir? Come on, come on up.
Hello, my name is Namir Castro, and I'm a resident. And this trail is going to affect me and my parent that they are next door to me. It's really a nuisance. This trail is going to bother us. It's right behind our house, and no matter how much trees you're going to put, we're still not going to be comfortable with that trail. I listen to everybody. Some people said they are with it, some people, a lot of them are against it, and I am against it. And I hope it's not going to go through, really. And that's all. But thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up. Anyone else in the center portion? I'm going to finish up with the center here. Anybody else in the center? Moving on to the left, and I'm going to go all the way to the back, ma'am. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Intisal Hamiz. I am one of the residents in Flissad Life.
All right, speak right into the microphone, hon. Thank you.
My name is Intisal Hamiz. I'm one of the resident in Flissad Life, and one of the houses that are going to be really affected by the trail, being so close to the trail. My biggest concern is safety, beside other concerns, but safety is more important to me. We're talking about houses that are value of half million and above, not any Sterling Heights houses, especially this area. It has been a target of intruders. We all know about that. We shouldn't forget the fact that until a couple years ago, there were many intruders watching families, watching patiently, driving around the area to see which family going to leave the house for the party. And they were breaking into the houses from the backyard, not from the front yard. They were targeting houses in Sterling Heights and Western Bloomfield area, to the point that police has to team with Pennsyl Club and Shannon Dower to get list of the people in the party and watch their houses without their knowledge until they catch these intruders. So putting this trail in the area doesn't make anybody feel comfortable. It's going to invite more people to the area to watch these houses, to pay attention when they empty, when they can do something. My house has been a target twice, and in 10 years, I lived there. The recent time was last week, and some of you walked, and I mentioned that I heard a noise and I called the police. They came, they looked around the house, they didn't see anything. Until Sunday, I was in Detroit visiting someone, and someone told me, police is taking your car towing it. I went to police, they told me, your car is stolen. How is it stolen? This is my car. They told me, you have a license plate stolen. And this officer, I believe, remember me? I came Sunday night to Sterling Heights Police to report. Someone put a stolen plate from a stolen car and placed it in my car, and I'm driving awake not knowing that. And police towed my car. They put me through a hell, Sunday and Saturday, and Monday. I was until 7:00 in Detroit. My sister has to drive 26 miles to pick me up, because my car was taken. Monday, I'm an accountant. It's a crucial day for me. It was first day of the week, first day of the month. I had to be at work at 9:00. Instead, I went to a towing place in Hamitramic at 8:00, because police told me, go pick your car, and then put a license plate. I went, they didn't give me my car. I had to go wait in line until Secretary of State of Hamitramic open at 9:00 to get a new license plate, went back to the towing place, went to Shen in Detroit to report to police. They didn't help me. I went to work at 11:00. This is very inconvenient. So imagine there is a trail behind my house. They're going to come from the front, they're going to park their car far, they know the path is open for them in the back, no trees in the middle, no order. Mostly, young men are doing that. They're going to go run and leave from neighbor house to their car. This is very, like, serious. People who don't live there, they don't feel it. I feel it. My neighbors feel it. And there is another thing we shouldn't forget. Every couple months, probably, we hear in the news, not only in Michigan, in all states, a woman walking, jogging, sometimes even with a dog, got raped, got killed. Those trails are not very safe, especially the way your shoulders, they're going to go through woods. Which woman going to walk through woods? She has to work with a company. I don't think any woman would do that alone. Some women go in the morning, because they have to go to work. Who's going to walk there? I don't see there is any, like, need to put it there. It's very close to the houses. I'll be sitting like full throttle, and the people will be walking like this area, because you plan to do it 10 feet, it's going to be so close to my house.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you so much.
So please cancel that.
You have exceeded your time.
Please, we are very worried.
Thank you very much, yes. Please, no applause. Thank you. No applauding. Thank you. All right, anybody else on this left side? Ma'am, I'll take you... Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Anna Korkevich. I'm the resident of Sterling Heights and the owner of one of those really nice premium lots. Boy, am I happy we had Mr. Palazzolo today. We had the opportunity to see the lots, beautiful lots, and I had opportunity to ask him, are you going to charge more for these lots or just the regular price? And he said, oh, considerably more. That's one of my lots. I'm the real estate broker, and I know that you interviewed another broker. However, I'm top 1% nationwide for several years, and so is my friend, whose opinion we'll hear in a second. It's very dangerous to have 10-feet-long, wide path. Let me show you. From here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, from here, well, let's say approximately here. All right? So that wide road, this is the road. There may be a car going through there. We have some people in the subdivision who are less obedient than others, and they make noise. Fourth of July starts two months before and ends two months after Fourth of July. I will be hearing, it will be in front of my property. From the trail, it will affect me, because everybody will be playing there. Mr. Vanderpool has seen this week. They brought hammock, they took my husband's bed, put it there, and they enjoyed it and destroyed it. And that's what going to happen. Can anybody answer me? If in the woods, any pervert exposes himself to my granddaughter, what am I going to explain? I will be very upset, and we are warning you. When I was buying the property, I did not base my expectations on some ideas that I created in mind. I came to the city. I asked if anything would be built. So I researched. 15 years later, after I paid, you're taking it back. Ma'am, you are comparing that when you were a young girl, you had a beautiful woods behind you, but that was somebody else's property. So you had to expect, this is wetlands. So wetlands should not be touched. And the trail, if it goes through my property, it will go through wetlands. Our... I have just received taxes, and our mileage, the citizens of Sterling Heights, is right now, I added it up. All the expenses that you have, can we have? Oh, you don't want to see. Our mileage is right now 41, 32. We are paying for something we really oppose. And I appreciate this lady here. I'm sorry, I don't remember, because I've been watching you. Yes, and she is concerned, she's watching and listening. Please, listen, everybody. We are very upset. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Please, no applause, sir. I'm going to ask one more time, please, no more applause. Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Madam Protem, Poray, Council Koshobsky, Mr. Vanderpool, and council members and residents. First of all, I'd like to welcome Ms. Davis to her new position in communications. Hopefully, this will spawn communications that are more effective, rather than antagonizing residents over Facebook, which I think is not only an immature but also ineffective way to communicate some of our proposed plans. Additionally, I'd like to thank Mr. Vanderpool, who took Mr. Bahorski and Mr. Castor, and they showed up, in fact, at my mom's residence, and they said, we're from the government and we're here to help. So I appreciate them taking the time to come out and look at some of the concerns that... and look at some of the concerns that we have specifically with respect to the proposed trail. Additionally, I'd like to address what Madam Mayor Protempore said to some of the residents last time we concluded this meeting, which was that, you know, we in fact had a moral obligation to let you guys know. And I think that that's fair to say, that frankly, we should be running governments with some sense of morality. Unfortunately for me, we don't enforce moral obligations, which is why today we're all able to enjoy the lyrical stylings of Jay-Z's Big Pimpin'. You can look that up on your own. But we do have some other obligations. And I think that the residents who are opposed to this had a reasonable expectation of privacy in that their property was adjoining a wetland, which they didn't expect was going to have any type of buildings on it or any type of throughway. They expected it to remain natural. And with that, you know, it's really discouraging. Well, what I feel is like, when you hear things from city council members at a kind of last-minute thrown-together meeting where, you know, facts are distorted, we're being told that wildlife, which is important to many residents, including myself, is going to be protected. And then you hear about, you know, the wolves. When in fact, I contacted a wolf conservation group, there has not been a wolf in Sterling Heights since probably 1910. There have only been two sightings of wolves in the lower peninsula, one in Emmett County in 2014 and prior to that, 2004 in Prescott County. So we're not conserving any wolves here in Sterling Heights. You know, I mean additionally, you know, there's other wildlife. Like I had a group of geese, there are about 30, just the other day when I was walking my dog close to 19 Mile, where part of the proposed trail is gonna go through. And I thought this gentleman who was gonna stop, he didn't, and he ran through all of these geese, about 30 of them. Granted, Canadian geese aren't my favorite animals. Sliding scale, I like some animals more than others, rodents and amphibians are on the lower end of that. But the reality is that you really haven't researched a lot of this. To that effect, I contacted one of my friends who's a longtime, I recognize that, a longtime real estate broker. And I'd just like to briefly read the statement for you. "Real estate values have been tied to location. Value can fluctuate from location within a city right down to the position of a home within a subdivision. Does it back to a main road? How private is the lot? Builders charge large premiums to clients choosing back lots to wooded areas green and green belts." And this is from Ed St. Aubin, who's been a real estate broker for 40 years. I think it was really unfair to have a real estate broker come in, say, I agree with everything that guy said, leave no opportunity for questioning, and then just jolt out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, come right up, please, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protemp, council members. My name is Mynesh Patel. I've been residing in Sterling Heights with my wife and my family and my parents since 1997. And we lived here before even 18, 1988 through 91. I live on Pond View. And as this lady said earlier, we paid premium for the lots that back up to the nature preserve. Nature preserve. I had called the city and verified upon the information that the builder gave us to make sure it's a nature preserve, not a park. Not a park. Nature preserve, wetlands in there. We had to actually grade the property so the water would not run into the wetlands. And we made sure that over the years, we made sure that that is sustained. Okay? So nature preserve, not a park. We love parks. I love all the national parks, state parks, city parks. We go to Riverbend, Stony Creek, Delia, Dodge Park, all the time. We love them. Build as many trails that you want in these parks that we can sustain without disrupting nature as much as you can. People love them, we love them. We should do that. But let's not disrupt the nature preserve. That is what was promised to us, that is what the city told us, and I would like to keep that intact. When we moved in, there were incidents where we had kids coming in and doing paintball. Okay, or they would gather there and party. And we did not really object as much as we should have, but over time, that went away. I don't want that coming back in there. And now we're talking about cutting a swath of maybe 20 feet of trees all the way through the wetlands and the nature preserve. I don't know how that's going to be supplemented with any amount of trees you're gonna plant back in there. And that's not right. I don't like that. I love driving into my subdivision in the fall where I can see all these trees. Nice colors, nice big blob of nature in my backyard that I enjoy. And now that's gonna be taken away, and I don't appreciate that. The other thing I know is if I sit in my front porch, I can hear people go through and walk by, and they bike, and they have kids running. That's fine. I don't sit in my front yard, I sit in my backyard to enjoy the nature. I love to hear the birds, I love to see the birds, I love to hear the leaves waving in the wind, not people walking through and talking and yelling and gathering and doing paintball. I don't want that in my backyard. Let's have people gather in parks to do that, not where you have nature preserve. So please, listen carefully to what I said, what other people are saying. And I'm gonna support any amount of sidewalks and trails you wanna build in the parks. And there are huge parks within 5, 10 minutes of where I live, and we use them. And I encourage all the residents to go do that. Some people wanna sell shoes and they want more trails. Appreciate that thought, but not in my backyard, please, and not where you have a nature preserve. The other thing is, that gentleman said, oh, I'll go clean up everything. I clean up. I have participated in Earth Day for the last 10 years. I go to the metro parks and I help clean up. I encourage everybody else to do that. But let's do that at the parks where it makes sense and not disrupt the nature preserve. So I vehemently oppose doing this project in our backyard.
Thank you very much, thank you. And please no applause. I'm being very patient, but it's very rude. Yes, sir, you can come on up, please, thank you.
I am resident over 20 years. You talk on the trail. Do you guys understand where is higher voltage? It's transformer. The transformer be only about 10 feet from the trail. If somebody driving his IC many times, crazy, and they hit the transformer, what's happened? That's I want to say, because the transformer is my property in the corner. I measure exactly 10 foot. And from the trail to transformer is exactly 10 foot. Concerned about this, thank you.
Thank you, Sei. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, I'm going to close this portion of public comment. And now go. And now we're moving on to reports from the city manager, Mr. Vanderpool. Do you have anything to report? Or would you like to make any comments on some of the residents' questions?
Sure, Mayor Protemp Sirovsky, I'll try to summarize the best I can some of the questions that were raised. First, there was a comment regarding the Upton House. As some know, the Upton House was damaged due to water main break and significant damage interior. And we've been working through our insurance company to get all that process. And we're now proceeding with HVAC replacement in July, flooring in August. Actually, worked throughout the remainder of this construction season. The work we're gonna be doing inside the Upton House under the insurance policy equates to about $150,000 in terms of replacements and restoring it to where it was and so on and better in some cases. In addition, we're accelerating the exterior improvements that were programmed. We figured it would be best with economies of scale and least disruption if we could accelerate those and get all this done this construction season. So there'll be about $300,000 in various improvements to the Upton House made this construction season. The exterior will be repainted, all the windows replaced. As you know, the porch was replaced last year and the roofing as well. So you can look forward to a rededication of the Upton House later on this year, certainly in time for Sterling Christmas. There was a question about the consent agenda. There's a resident expressed concern that there were varying dollar amounts on the consent agenda, and that's exactly what the consent agenda is for, for rather routine items. Often, they're purchase items that have been thoroughly reviewed by the city council through the strategic planning process, also through the budgetary process. And at this point, they become somewhat routine. Nevertheless, what we do for the community is we provide the entire backup as any other agenda on the city council meeting agenda. So from your homes, you can look at the entire backup for every single consent item. Some have 10 pages, some have 50 pages. Depends on the item, depends on the complexity. So we provide no less information. And items can be pulled from consent as well. And we do comment if individuals have questions about any specific item on consent. I certainly normally reply during this portion of the meeting. Or if we have to get additional meeting, I follow up with an email or a phone call to whoever the resident is. Now, moving on to the, well, let me, before I get to the bike path, there was some question about sidewalk on 18 Mile Road. A resident brought that up. Obviously, there's a patchwork of sidewalk on 18 from Van Dyke to Mound. We're very concerned about that. We've been concerned about it for some time. We've been working with Ford Motor Company to make sure we can get the necessary easement across their property. They are now willing to give us that easement. We're gonna put in the sidewalk in front of DPW with the new DPW expansion and improvement project beginning this construction season. So all the gaps will be filled. We're hoping we're gonna get them all done this construction season. That includes in front of KBC Tools as well. In addition, we have been meeting with DTE Energy to make sure we can light up that entire walkway area. It is most concerning to us. We do have walkers in the morning going to those businesses, and they really need sidewalks. So we're doing our very best to get that in this construction season. There still are some legal hurdles that we have to clear with easement agreements, but we're working diligently on it. Moving on to the bike path, there was a question about the crossing at 19 Mile Road and if the city will be doing anything to improve that crossing. And we certainly will be. We will have pavement markings going across 19 Mile Road. In addition, we'll have signage that lights up. If a pedestrian is crossing, they'll push the button and the signage will be activated. We've used this very effectively in other areas, on 17 Mile Road, at Davis, and also at Heritage Junior High down at Metro Parkway and Dodge Park. Both the 17 Mile Road and Dodge Park have higher traffic counts than at 19 Mile Road, and those pedestrian crossings have worked very effectively. There was some, a couple of residents spoke about empty beer cans that they found on their property adjacent to the Clinton River. I'll check our records. I don't know if there was a 911 call made for trespassing or loitering. I'll check to see if we received any calls. But certainly, if a resident notices that, they should contact the city. We'll get out there immediately to pick it up. We will dispatch someone within a matter of minutes and have that situation corrected. But if it's a trespassing issue, with or without a bike trail, or any sort of trespassing issue, that should be reported and 911 should be called. There was a question about restrooms at the cafe at Troy Beaumont. And yes, we know exactly where those are located. I personally know where those restrooms are located. I've personally been there on numerous occasions. There was, some mentioned that some of the path is in wetlands. That's not accurate. The path is in floodplain. But we have pathways all over floodplain throughout the city. It's permissible by MDEQ, which now goes under the acronym of EAGLE. We've had discussions with EAGLE representatives with respect to this specific path. We've shared our plan. Our engineers know exactly what the requirements are. There are no red flags with this plan whatsoever. No concern about the pathway at grade or any of the crossings. So we're making sure we do our due diligence there. You know, I think I could go on, but I don't wanna be redundant. If city council wants me to follow up on anything more specific, I'll certainly be happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor Vanderpool, or ma'am, Mr. Vanderpool. And if anyone does have any questions or concerns that they would like him to address, you can see Ms. Riska, leave your name and number, and he will be able to get back to you at any time. And now, any comments from council? Oh, Mr. Vander, I'm so sorry, Mr. Koshobski, what would you like to say?
We do have one item tonight, Mayor Protemp Sirovsky, for close session.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you so much. And we will be adjourning after the meeting for that. Any, now any items, anyone on council like to speak on anything or have any comments of the meeting tonight?
Mayor Protemp Sirovsky.
Yes, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start out by saying that I was notified this week that a very active volunteer in our boys, Sterling Heights Boys Baseball Club, suddenly passed away, very unexpectedly. He was a tremendous volunteer in that organization. I would like to thank him and his family. As we all know, when someone in the family volunteers, the whole family usually gets, you know, has some participation in that volunteering as well. So Mike Thomas was a coach in the organization, as well as, I believe, you know, one of the age leaders, the age group leaders. He was a terrific guy, very active, loved working with the kids. And just like I said, thank him and his family and prayers to his family for all that he did for the numerous hundreds of boys that he helped coach over the years. So that being said, Mr. Vanderpool, you answered my question about sidewalks at the new DPW building. And on to the trail. So I wanna start by thanking all the residents that showed up to that meeting last Tuesday. There happened to have been four council members that were there. We were freely available to speak with all of you. We spoke with a lot of you. I also wanna thank the administration for organizing it. I think the way they grouped people off as far as where their location on the proposed trail was, was very helpful. At the end of the evening, I think more people than I thought walked away, satisfied with what they were seeing, the changes that were made. Then myself and various members of council actually walked the trail the day after on that Wednesday and saw some of the concerns. Although I got a better bearing of exactly how secluded or how this path is really not gonna be visible from a lot of these homes. I think there are some safety concerns. The police chief was very upfront about if we need to increase patrols. The police chief was very upfront about if we need to increase patrols. Mr. Langless from Parks and Rec also said, as far as litter and other things, vandalism, if there is any, hopefully there isn't, we would be on top of that. I am glad to see that the buffers are going to be going in. There are some properties that we could put that buffer much closer to homes, and after speaking with residents, we decided, you know what? Because the property line is a certain place, we don't really have to do that. We can make it further into the trail, and so they still do have some view and some nature. I can tell you, as far as displacing nature, there are more deer in this city than you can shake a stick at. And I know when we walked that area, we saw all the deer footprints. I work at the career prep center, and I can tell you that there's a herd of deer that live right adjacent to the parking lot, and when those kids leave three times a day to go back to their home schools, the deer continue to eat right there in that field adjacent to the parking lot. And the turkey scared me in between my cars going to lunch one day. The wildlife adapt. I know nobody likes change. I get that. I, you know, I'm very sympathetic to it. I also know that the voters of this city, and yes, it did not pass by a big margin, but it passed, and I have to respect that as well. I know Mr. Vanderpoel and Mr. Bahorsky have been very good about going to individual homes. Just call him, reach out to him, he will meet with you, he will see if there's more we can do. We want to work with the residents. We would never, never encourage anyone to vandalize a home, to loiter, to spill garbage or cans on a property. We don't do that. We're a community together. We're a community. So I think, you know, if any of you have not met with Mr. Vanderpoel and you would like some more reassurance, or maybe you have a different idea for us near your property, please reach out to him. We are not opposed to this. Okay? And at this point, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Any other council members?
Thank you.
Ms. Yarko?
Sure.
Ms. Dab?
I'm going to be brief, because so much has been said already, you know, about the trail and those that are wanted, those that are opposed to it. But I have to tell you that I've been receiving emails, phone calls, and messages from people that are in favor of it, that live in your neighborhoods but are afraid to come forward because of the opposition that's there now, and they're afraid that's going to be some kind of retribution, or they're not going to talk to them after it goes through because they do want it. So those are things that I've been faced with personally. I'm grateful that you've come to this meeting, or in the meeting that we held last week, and I certainly enjoyed the walk on the trail or the, you know, the prospective trail, and the adjustments that we're making so that we do preserve as much privacy for you as we can. But I think what surprised me, and as you come up here and say it's nature, it's nature, is how many people, when you look at where their lot lines are, the utility boxes, and beyond that, you've been able to enjoy this, that was city property, that was actually a collective investment for everybody that lives in this community. It wasn't just your backyard. It belongs to 130,000 people. It's their collective investment as well. And some of you have enjoyed it as your own property for many years. So that's what I was really surprised about, and the fact that in order to get back that privacy, we have to put more money into it in order to put those extra trees in and whatever changes we have to make because we want you to be happy. I do know that real estate agents, as soon as Dodge Park had its improvements, were already marketing their homes that are in this area, saying in close proximity to Dodge Park. So it is a factor that people look at. I don't see that depreciation for this trail in that area. So, and it is change, and it's fear of the unknown, but I think this is going to be a good thing. It really is, it was part of what people voted on, and I think when I go back to the fact that I can't override what other people voted for, and it doesn't matter what the margin is. We could look at other elections that we've had recently, was it smart busing? It passed by such a small margin in Macomb County, but we're still paying for that. It doesn't matter what the margin is, if it's the majority of the people want that, it's what we are supposed to be doing. It's doing our job. I would tell you that I would be completely opposed to going into the body of the preserve and the nature preserve there. I think there are things that we could do outside of it, that we can incorporate it with our nature center, to bring attention to the habitat there, the, certainly the ecosystem, but I certainly would not want to go into the preserve for anything and leave that as pristine as we can. So I know that this is difficult because it's there. The other thing that was brought up to me was, well, the trail that was proposed on the drainage, the ditch that goes through the city that's owned by the county, and, you know, we said it didn't go through, and it was because part of it is, the city couldn't get behind it because we weren't in control of it. For this two miles that we're going to have there, we are in control of what happens there. So when you have a concern, we can address it. There is no other place to go. We don't have to have any cooperation from another government entity. We are in control of what goes on there, and that's why I have faith that we're going to do the best for all of you and for the residents that voted for this. And nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Yarko. Any other council members who'd like to make a comment?
Ms. Rosowski.
Yes, Mr. Reiki.
You know, I want to commend the city for the efforts they've done on behalf of the residents. I attended the meeting last Tuesday, and the city gave a really great presentation. I also walked the path of my colleagues, and I am in rare complete agreement with Councilwoman Zarco and Councilwoman Schmidt, because I think this has been net good for the city. We walked the path, and I think there's about five homes that I had really grave concerns about, and I think we've worked with most of the property owners, tried to allay some of those concerns. You know, every significant project the city has done has gotten a ton of pushback. I got emails and calls about the community center from the people who lived behind there, about how they're losing the trees behind the, where the community center is now going to stand. You know, Mr. Smith came in here years ago, and even more recently, about Dodge Park, about how the music is too loud, and about how it's a honky-tonk park now, and a number of things. You know, even I, when I sat in the audience, as far as on council, I opposed the skatepark. I thought it didn't make sense. And now I drive down here, on a Thursday night especially, and the crowds are massive. You know, the Hanson's has their running team that goes through the Dodge Park, I think is wonderful. I see 20, 30 kids every time I go to the skatepark. So I was proven wrong because they're using it and they're, you know, we get no complaints about these things. Tons of people are using the park, and if you haven't come down to a music in the park or a farmer's market yet, I urge you, the whole city's here. Come on down, listen to the music, get something to eat from the food trucks, and really enjoy the community we're trying to build. You know, when I walked the path with my colleagues, I was shocked by the idea that we're in people's backyards. We aren't. We are on city land. But more than that, I was shocked by how many people had cleared yards of the nature preserve, cut down all the trees, and expanded their backyards. We, all the council has satellite maps in front of them, and you can look at it on Google Maps, and you can see how many people have cleared the lots. And the city's not going to hold you responsible for this. We have an ordinance that says if you clear that land, you're required to replace every tree you've cleared. And we're saying, we're going to come in there and we're going to do screening, we're going to plant more trees. We're not going to hold you to account, which is you destroying part of the nature preserve to expand land you don't own as your property. So to me, I think the city is offering both a great deal here and also a community amen that so many people are going to use. It's going to increase property values. You know, if I knocked on your door and I said, "I want to offer you $5,000 right now," I'm sure everyone would be like, "I'll take it." If I want to say I want to put a nature trail in, it's going to increase your property value between $5,000 and $10,000 overnight, people are like, "That doesn't make any sense." But the market will prove it. So like my colleagues, I support this trail, and to echo Councilwoman Zarco, the people voted on it. And when we put things to a vote, we are trusting that people are going to make the decision. You know, if recreating recreation had not gone through, we'd have a very different Dodge Park and a very different city center. If state streets hadn't gone through, I probably wouldn't live here anymore because I believe that our crime would have gone down. So we have to trust the residents, they know what they're doing. And to overturn their proposal, I think that that's just undemocratic. You know, we could, are we supposed to cancel the community center because a few people called and said we didn't like it? Are we supposed to not build the new stage in Dodge Park and not build the farmer's pavilion because a few folks opposed it? That's not how we do things in America. It's not how we do things in Michigan. It's not how we do things in Sterling Heights. So for me, I have to go with the will of the people. And just to speak to Mr. Smith and the people behind your house, if they're trespassing, we need to call the police. It's insane that they would litter on your property. I find it to be offensive. But let's be clear, the river is a public use. Anybody can ride the river. You don't own the river. You own the land. So we can't ban folks from using the river. We actually encourage it. So I just want to be very clear, if they're on your property, they are violating the law. But if they're passing through, that's just the way it is in Michigan. It's in the state constitution. We can't change that. So with that, that's all I have, Mrs. Rosowski.
Thank you, Mr. Reiki. Any other comments from council?
Mayor Proton.
Yes, Mrs. Koski?
You remembered my name.
Well, yeah, I didn't forget. I was just tentatively saying this.
Back on March 23rd, 1990, the then sitting council and the city manager, and Ray Felipczuk, I don't know if any of you remember him, we did a grant application from the Michigan National Resource Trust Fund for the amount of $675,000. And that application was to acquire 160, plus or minus, acres of major and significant woodlands and wetlands which merit preservation in its natural state for the benefit and enjoyment of present and future generations. That's why the nature preserve is so special to me, because Stephen Rice made the motion, I supported it, Jean Gush signed the application. So that's a special spot. And obviously, this was part of the master plan, recreation plan, which is updated every 10 years. So exactly who put it in the master plan, I don't know, but when it went in, I said, "No, let's not go through that. That's special property." With our conversations and the fact that you, as residents, spoke out to management, the path is not going to go into the nature preserve as it was originally planned. So you accomplished a great deal. It's going to end at the hospital. So I'm going to entrust you to take care of my property up there. That's special to me, and it should be special to you, your backyard. Change happens, and it's, everything changes, and changes are going to continue to happen. But you have to pay attention. You have to listen to what is going on. This is your government, and if there is something that we are proceeding, when I say "we," council, is proceeding with, that you don't think is quite right, it's up to you to speak up. We have a new community relations director as of this evening, and she has given me a great deal of confidence that she's going to find a way to communicate to our residents so that you will know what is going on at this table. So again, I'm going to say it one more time, if there's something that you don't like and you think it's affecting you, speak up. Okay? To continue on, it was mentioned this evening about the bike path. Mr. Hanson, you have a great path there. How would you like to connect it to Utica Road? I propose, and I would like council to consider this, and maybe the city manager might consider it too, to see if we might have some extra money in our recreating recreation. We used to have the Klineau Bridge. The Klineau Bridge connected Utica Road to Clinton River. Wow, we got Shaner. Shaner went all the way through. Well, we don't need Klineau Bridge anymore. That's where you closed your eyes and hoped you stayed on your side of the bridge to cross over. I propose that we now do a walking path, a walking bridge, whatever you want to call it, from the Klineau side over to the Edison corridor, or the Edison side, Edison Street, I guess it's called, where Mr. Hanson's path has an entrance. That way, you can ride down Utica Road, you can go across the bridge, you can go all the way up Hanson's Trail, go into Dodge Park, take the bridge in Dodge Park, and come back down Utica Road again. You want paths. That's the best path I can think of, because when you get done with that, I don't think you're going to go around more than one or two times. So that's my proposal. I would really like council to consider that, and maybe Mr. Vanderpoel could check his checkbook or his back pocket and see if he can come up with a few extra dollars. My other issue is sidewalks. We used to want a sidewalk on all major roads to lead to our parks. Mr. Smith, you are absolutely correct. That's something that I've been working on for, I don't want to say how long, but a long time. I've been trying to get a sidewalk to lead to Mr. Hanson's Park over there on Clinton River on the south side. There's three lots. I've been working on it for three years. I've been promising it's going to happen this year. We'll see. So I encourage that we continue, that council continues to work on getting sidewalks leading to all the major parks, and maybe think about making the sidewalks a little bit larger on the major roads so that bicycles can ride on those paths rather than in the road. My other question, and this is directed to Mr. Vanderpoel, if you can possibly give us a number where people can call if their neighborhood has been marked for sidewalk repair, and they have two or three or four or five plaques marked that need repair, who do they call if they don't feel that it's a necessary repair? With that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Koski. Mr. Gannis, anything?
Sure. I just want to say thank you to everybody who came, not only to this meeting but previous meetings, to share your point of view on this very special issue. You know, being engaged in government is very important. You're the voice, you are the people, and you're the voices that we listen to, and I think it's very important that you use that voice, but not just for your issues, but for the issues that affect the city as a whole. I understand your concerns with the trail and the problems that go along with it. I'm not, I don't quite believe that maybe the problems are as bad as some people are concerned about. I think fear is a great motivator, and I think a lot of people have been motivated by fear in this particular issue. But I can tell you that it takes a lot of work. It takes work to maintain a nice city, a nice area, a nice park, and certainly a nice creek. I cut my finger the other day because a tree fell in the Plum Brook Drain, and my tree saw became a finger saw for a split second, and I had to bandage it up. But one of the things I pulled out of the creek was a traffic barrel, not a cone, a barrel. And at the age of 61, that was pretty hard to move out of there by myself. I got it, and I live to tell about it. But the fact of the matter is, you know, the one gentleman, he goes on Earth Day, and I thank you very much for the work that you do and making sure our community... and I thank you very much for the work that you do in making sure our community is clean. But it's a constant job. It is a constant job, and we all can't be there to maintain everything. So, that's why we have the city that we have and the system that we have, when people can pick up the phone and call and say that there's a problem and it needs to be addressed. We have the apps now where people can point, what is it, Fix-It?
C Click Fix.
C Click Fix. Yeah. C Click Fix, okay. And so anyways, I want to thank you for coming and voicing your opinion. I just encourage you to please, not just on your issues, not just on your issues, but on all city issues. Please be involved and stay involved. I want to welcome Melanie. Is she still here? You know, I asked you a lot of questions in our interview. The one thing I didn't ask was, what does the D stand for?
Diane.
Diane, thank you very much. Okay, so now I know. I guess I didn't do my homework as much as I should have. And finally, I'd like to say, Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
This was a tough position that you were put into tonight, and I just want to say thank you for the work that you did here tonight. You did an excellent job, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Okay, I will finish with a very, very, sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Yarko. We've spoken a lot tonight, so I just kind of assumed.
I know, I know. But you know what? One of the problems that we're coming up with this week, and we do, it's every year, are fireworks. And I noticed on the news that one of the cities downriver actually provided free signs for combat veterans that they could put in their front yards that said, "Home of a combat veteran, please be courteous when you," you know, with the fireworks. And most of them said that as long as they're prepared for that fireworks, they're fine. It's the one that goes off while they're sleeping in the middle of the night. So, those are the ones that bother them and cause some trauma. So, I'm hoping that maybe we can look into providing the same type of signs to some of the combat veterans that we have in our community next year. I think it's late for it this year, but next year, I would like that, to see that we can do something like that. And I'm sorry, and you did a great job tonight.
Madam Mayor Protem?
Would you like to speak too, Mr. Radke?
I just wanted to say I fully support Councilwoman Koski's idea of a pedestrian bridge over Klineau. I wanted to add without objection, we should also investigate maybe a kayak livery at the same point. I know that a lot of people use it that way as it is, and that's just kind of like--
At least landing.
Yeah, like landing, yeah, kind of like, they use it just as a way to get off the river, but there's no infrastructure there at all to help them.
Excellent idea.
Thank you. That's all I had, and you did a great job.
Well, thank you for that. But, okay, so I will thank my colleagues on council for all of their comments. I do want to make just a couple quick, brief ones, and one is to thank you all for coming. As Mr. Yanis says, it is important, even if you don't agree with us, to voice your opinions, to be here. I love all of the comments. I love the, Mr. Smith, you always make me smile, because you really do drive your point home, and I wanted to thank you for that, because I do drive 18 mile every morning at 6:30, every single morning. And there are, thank goodness, there's started to wear those reflective vests, a lot of the walkers, but it is very dangerous, and we do need to be a lot more diligent and caring about these residents, or even non-residents, these people in our city who are walking. So, that is extremely important. I wanted to apologize also that I did not make the Tuesday meeting that I did intend to. I said that I would be there, and I had a very serious family emergency. I would have not missed it any other way, but on Wednesday, I was able to break away from my emergency to come and walk that path. And it is important for us to put ourselves in your position and to see what your, everything is going. So, with that, I, yes, I have my own notes. I'm sorry? The path has already been decided on, Jerry. Okay, thank you so much. And I do thank you all, thank you for bearing with me my little, my couple of flubs, but I do appreciate you taking the time to be here today. And I do call for a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved. Support.
We'll be returning. We may, we need a roll call vote.
We need a roll call vote first for Mrs. -- Please keep your voices down if you are leaving. We're still in meeting and session.
Okay, roll call, Mrs. Koski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Serosky?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, and we will not be returning. Thank you very much, and have a good night.